That's a good one. Okay. Okay, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us today. Today, our invocation will be given by Chaplain Antoine Charles with our Corpus Christi Police Department.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve you in this capacity. Bless each and every member here as they make decisions, Father, for your city and for your people. Father, we love you and we thank you, dear God. Blessed now in this day, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. And our pledge to the flag of the United States and to the Texas state flag will be led by Madeline Cantu. She is a junior at Moody High School and a varsity volley-- very good, I might add, volleyball player. She also attends the Health and Science Academy. Madeline?
Go Trojans!
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Madeline. Ms. Worthen, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Paulette Wajardo.
Present.
Councilmember Roland Barrera.
Here.
Sylvia Campos.
Gil Hernandez.
Here.
Michael Hunter.
Here.
Jim Klein.
Here.
Mike Pestley. Everett Roy.
Here.
Dan Suckley.
Here.
City Manager Peter Zanoni.
Present.
City Attorney Miles Rizley.
Here.
Mayor and Council, a quorum of the council, and the required charter officers are present to conduct the meeting.
Great, thank you, Rebecca. Okay, that'll take us to Section E, our City Manager's Comments and Update on City Operations. Mr. Zanoni?
Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Good morning. We do have three items on the City Manager's Report, and I'm gonna have three different presenters present each of them. I'll do some opening comments. So Nieman Young, our Assistant City Manager overseeing our Public Works operations, is gonna provide the council and the community with a infrastructure management plan update. And so we know that we have a five-year plan to address streets in our community. And we report to the City Council quarterly on the progress being made, not only by our city crews, but also by the contract crews. And so this is something a former council member, Councilman Molina, requested that we do, and the council's endorsed that. So Nieman is gonna provide the quarterly update that will be the fourth quarter report for fiscal year 2022. So through last year's fiscal year list. And as you may recall, when we reported all of fiscal year '22, we also included the fiscal year 2021 program, because we're still in this catch-up mode. In the past four years, we know that it took us time to create a public works department, hire a director, rehire another director, and so on. So we're still admittedly a little bit behind. As an example, we haven't started the '23 list of projects yet, because we're still catching up from the '22 and '21. So Nieman's report's gonna be on over 300 projects that are in the work plan, that five-year plan, for fiscal year '21 and '22. And then soon, we'll be talking about 2023, probably our next quarter report. What you're gonna see in Nieman's report is we're making progress. We're thrilled that we have our public works leadership here today, and that that team is now 100% complete with permanent-- almost complete with permanent placements. Ernesto Delgarza is our new Public Works Director and brings several decades of talent, both in the tech side, but also the private sector side. So we're confident he'll begin to re-lead our teams forward to get caught up. So with that, Nieman's gonna walk us through the PowerPoint. We do have a presentation that was handed out to the council this morning that updates slightly the one that was in the agenda material from last week. So Nieman?
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir. As the City Manager stated, we're gonna discuss the Infrastructure Management Plan, or IMP. And as a reminder, it is the city's five-year plan to address street infrastructure. I'd like to just take an opportunity to remind the general public and council that the IMP is made up of four programs, which includes the Public Works in-house projects, our Residential Streets Reconstruction Program, or RSRP, our Street Preventative Maintenance Program, or SPMP, and our Concrete Streets Program. If you'll take a look at this slide, you'll see that those four programs combined comes to a total of 309 projects, of which 179 are complete. Of the remaining 130 projects, 36 are in construction, 16 are scheduled to begin construction, 30 are in design, and 45 are pending review. On this slide, the projects are broken down by their respective programs to provide an overall summary of the plan's progress. In the first column, the Public Works Street Maintenance Operations, or also referred to as our in-house projects, are listed. These are the projects that our in-house forces are self-performing. For this report, they're responsible for 158 projects listed and have completed 85, or 54%, of the projects, with 73 actually being worked on. The other programs are listed in the second, third, and fourth columns, and all completed by contractual partners. On the fourth slide, you can see the progress and completion across all four of our programs by quarter, specifically the last row being the first quarter of fiscal year 2023, as of January 1st. This slide demonstrates the fact that we're a long way from where we were last year, but obviously there is work left to do, with 54% of our in-house projects being complete as of January 1st, 59% of our RSRP projects being complete, 71% of our SPMP projects being complete, and 67% of our concrete streets being completed. And as the City Manager stated, we're currently working on completing fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22 programs, and then we'll move forward into tackling the fiscal year '23 projects. For fiscal year '21, in our in-house projects, we're 80% complete, and for fiscal year 2022, we have 36% complete. For RSRP, 2021, we're 89% complete, and for 2022, we're 16% complete. And for our SPMP, for fiscal year '21, we're 76% complete, and for fiscal year '22, we're 65% complete. For our Concrete Street Program, we're 100% complete on fiscal year '21 and 33% complete in fiscal year 2022. In conclusion, staff is aware of the city's overall street conditions, and they are in need of addressing. This quarterly report demonstrates the hard work that our in-house staff and contractual partners are doing to improve the street infrastructure in the city. As stated before, they are making a great progress, but there's still a long way to go. And we're currently working with the new leadership for the Public Works Department and myself to do more revising of the IMP, specifically to ensure that the new PCI scores that were given to us earlier this year are included in the strategy for addressing our infrastructure. In addition, we are working on some other different variables that we feel will make us better postured to tackle infrastructure across the city. And with those things being said, I'll stand by for any questions from the mayor and the council.
Sure. Thank you, Nieman. We really appreciate this quarterly report. I'm just gonna ask, I'm concentrated on the Residential Streets column on page three. So we have 29 in design, 12 in construction, two that are scheduled. So of those 29, do we know how much, how many of those will make it into, or let's say, out of design, right? In the next, I don't know how long, like, what's the timeframe for any of those streets to come out of that particular level of the process?
Yes, ma'am. And the RSRP program is managed by the Engineering Department, but we do have weekly huddles where Public Works and Engineering to make sure that we get updates on not only in-house projects, but also the contractual projects as well. And the 29 projects that are in design, we was told by Engineering is gonna be completed within the next, I believe, four to five months.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, roughly. So it's, okay, good.
Yes, ma'am.
So it's not, I didn't know if it was, you know, by the end of the year or something.
Yeah, the next quarter.
Okay, next four or five months, they come out of, more or less, out of design, and then, that's great. Okay. Okay. Councilman Pestley?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask you a quick question. I had brought up sometime last year about the possibility of putting our bond programs into the IMP mapping system. Are we still gonna try to do that?
That's been completed, sir, and we could send you the link, but we have added the bond project. We combined the IMP projects with the bond projects, so you get a whole list of picture when you go on the website.
So I can type in any of those names, and they'll drill down to that?
Right, sir. It's on the website.
It's on our website, Nieman?
Yes, sir.
It's on the website?
It's been updated.
Okay, so it's already been updated to the IMP?
Yes, sir.
I haven't used it in a while, but I again want to thank the IT Department for taking the time to go in and make that work. When you type in the name, it'll actually, like Google Earth, it'll zoom down to the street.
Right, sir. That was a good suggestion, Councilman. So it has both, just for the public. The, these projects that we're showing today is our maintenance program.
Right.
Then we have the bond program. So in the past, we only had the map for the maintenance.
Yep.
But now, based on your recommendation, we have both the bond program and the annual maintenance in the map.
Great.
When people go online.
Great, good, very good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Councilman Klein?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This may not be the proper venue, I guess, but I think I'm gonna echo some comments, I think, made by Councilman Pestley, last month anyway, that I think a great deal more attention needs to be given to residential streets. And it looks as if by the numbers here, if I'm reading these correctly, we're doing a maybe a better job on reconstructing some of the trunk lines, and we're falling a bit further behind, or again, not progressing as far on the residential streets. And, you know, as he mentioned, I guess, last December, on the campaign trail last fall, we heard that quite a bit from the residents around the city, that the residential streets, some of them in certain parts of the city, again, are in woeful condition. I understand that, again, we're still trying to catch up yet, but anything we can do to expedite that, I think, would really be beneficial to the overall public.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And we 100% agree. A lot of effort's gone into taking care of our arterials and collectors. We definitely understand that residential streets has been named as the priority by the mayor and council, and that's definitely taken into consideration as we move forward in the revisions that we're gonna be bringing to council later this year.
Right, and Nieman, can you put up Slide 3, please, and Councilman and the mayor for the entire council? So what we're presenting today, except for the concrete street, all those three programs, the Public Works Maintenance Operations, the, that one doesn't have the word residential in it, but the next column, the Residential Street Reconstruction, and the Street Preventative Maintenance, known as SPMP, those three programs are all residential streets.
Right.
Every one of these is residential. This is not the arterial and collectors that the bond program addresses. So you can see we're making better progress than, say, the maintenance program, the SPMP, almost 71% complete. Those are neighborhood streets, as is the next column to the left, the Residential Street Reconstruction, and then the Public Works areas. The two programs, if you focus in the middle, in some of our streets, and we see them when we drive around town, it's a complete reconstruction. We're taking the asphalt off, putting new base material in. That's a more evasive and time-consuming, but necessary, project, or projects. The maintenance program may be more of an overlay, a cracking, a sealing of cracks, and an overlay, not much movement of the pavement or any base work. And the Public Works column, the far-left one, we do a combination of both heavy reconstructions and maintenance. It's just, we're doing it. The city's doing it. So our programs are devised by that. The first column is Public Works crews doing the work, doing the work, self-performing. That saves taxpayer money, and we can get more work done. Up until four years ago, the city was doing very little self-performance. We didn't even have the equipment or well-trained crews, or using the right material. So we're doing all that now. That saves taxpayer money. And then the next three columns over, those are all done by contractors. So we have numerous contractors that are partners with us and other business changes. We meet with them. I do personally with Nieman and Ernesto, meet with them every quarter to just talk and see how business is going. We have a positive working relationship, and that wasn't necessarily the case either. So we rely on our contract forces that are out there. They're an important part of getting the streets fixed. But we wanna have good working relationships with the leadership of those teams, as well as the frontline crews. And so those three programs, the difference there is we're better managing and monitoring contract compliance, have better working relationships with the companies, have better expectations. We see it, you know, we can see in our community, arterial and collectors have made significant improvements. Just look at Staples and Everhart and any one of these major corridors. But it's those neighborhood streets where design standards up until recently were weak, and so streets were built substandardly compared to other Texas cities, and they've had early failures. Just a few months ago, though, we issued, based on council policy guidance, revised standards so that new streets, new subdivisions have to be built, have to be built better. And not any better than any other Texas city. It's commensurate with other Texas cities. That'll result in less premature failure and less burden on the taxpayer. So it's all of the above. We're working as hard as we can. We have some great crews out there, great leadership, and we're happy with our contractors, but it's, we're in a catch-up mode. And, but we put things in place to minimize deterioration, especially in those new roads.
I appreciate that. That's good to hear. I understand, appreciate as well, but it's very difficult work, especially in the nine or 10 months of summer here in Corpus Christi. I might be a confidence of that as well. My sense is also that the residential street repairs can be performed faster than the trunk lines, so you can really accomplish a great deal more in a matter of time.
Ernesto can probably talk about that, but if it's a full reconstruction, probably not. When we do the full reconstruction, even the neighborhood street. We've talked about the business decision of replacing utilities. So we had one street where we should have replaced the utilities. We didn't. It was a full reconstruction. Guess what? The utilities failed, so we had to come in and cut the street. We don't wanna do that. So it's not any faster, I would submit, but Ernesto may wanna add to that. He's the expert.
Yeah, Ernesto Delgarza, Director of Public Works. So yes, sir, when you work off of a residential street, you still have to provide egress to the local users. On a residential street, you can have anywhere from 40 to 80 off one city block, and we have to coordinate all our construction activities with those users. And then when you're on an arterial street or a collector, there are less impacts, because it's really just business driveways. And so it's a little bit more coordination, and therefore takes more time to build those residential street projects, because we're trying to get the construction crews out of the way in the morning and then, and then in the evening when they come home. And so it does add to our timeline a little bit.
But Councilman has some good news. So up to this point, before Ernesto started, you see those residential streets that have numerous pothole repairs, there's like 50 to 100, and the curbs are sunken in, because the guidance, the guidelines then didn't have compaction. So developers just put the curbs on, you know, less compacted soil, which they sink. So up to this point, and we're gonna bring this to council soon to show you the business proposition, up to this point, that street would be on the list for 10 years from now, because we have to do a full reconstruction, fix the curbs, replace all the asphalt, fix the base. But we're realizing that's really not gonna work. The community is fed up, and they want the streets fixed. So Ernesto did a few pilots in some of our subdivisions where we said, you know what, we can't, it's gonna be 10 years to do that, so let's do something now. And that something now is a full overlay, about two inches over the surface, fixing the base, but leaving the concrete, what we refer to as flat work, not finished. And it doesn't look as good as if it was completely reconstructed, but the business proposition is we can have a nice, smooth street to drive on now, or 10 years from now. And of course, the residents are saying, you know what, the curb's sunken because of poor design standards. I'm okay with that, as long as we can drive on our street. So that's what we're looking at doing with Ernesto and his team's guidance. The alternatives are keep filling those hundreds of potholes or wait 10 years. And we're saying, you know what, it probably makes sense to do what Ernesto came up with, which is a slight milling, a fixing of the base, and a two-inch overlay. I personally went to several streets they showed me about a month ago, and they looked great. And the neighbors came out when they were doing the work, saying, thank God, we love this, even though the curbs are sunken because of poor standards. So that's what we're looking at. We're gonna come to council with that full IMP revision. That'll be part of the conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Campos?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, fellow council, councilmen. I just also wanted to just, again, this came up in our orientation about, I just went again on the website, just to see about the streets. One of the simplest things that I think would help the public would be if, again, if they would be in alphabetical order. Instead of, I had suggested that most people don't know what district, you know, they're in. So if you, we had just at least the street, and we would know, you know, is our street gonna be there in the next five years? Instead of like doing, just, you know, looking at districts at various different ways. But me, I, I think it's, it's, makes more sense if these streets were to be listed in alphabetical orders, that we would know. And of course, with the rest of the information. So those, that would be the only suggestion that I would, I would make.
Yeah, Councilwoman, thank you, because you sent me that suggestion this weekend. We're working on it already. Yeah, we're already working on it. But there is a lookup feature in the system where you can type in the name of the street, and it will come up. Nieman's telling me, is that right?
Yes, on the spreadsheet, you can, there is a look-up.
On the website?
Online, yes, yes, ma'am, online.
I guess you'll need to show me, because, thank you.
We'll work, we'll walk you through it, Councilwoman, but that was a great suggestion. So we're sorting that list that we sent council late last week. That is with the PCI scores, Pavement Condition Index. That was sorted first by district and then alphabetically by street. But we're resorting it and providing it to the council probably tomorrow. Everything's alphabetically first, then district second. That was a good suggestion, so we'll send that to you.
I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. We'll take care of that.
To add to that, we should probably have a district finder, just in general. If somebody doesn't know, they can type in their street, and it tells you what district you're in.
Yes.
But anyway, that's a side note.
Right.
We do? Oh.
We do, right.
Yes, we already have that, Mayor.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Councilwoman, you're done?
Yeah.
If you can turn your light off there. Thank you. Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Ernie, on your Manning levels, your 2022 projects for in-house are only 36% complete. How are your Manning levels?
36% complete? I'm sorry, you're saying manpower?
Well, what, based on what this report says, you're only 22, 36% complete on the 2022 in-house projects.
Right.
A lot of it has to do with, you know, your Manning levels. Do you have the people to do the work?
Correct.
What's your current Manning level?
I mean, it hasn't changed since the beginning of the program that we're showing right now. Specific numbers, I don't have them in front of me. If you're asking about manpower, or?
Yes, your manpower, the crews you have to do the work.
Vacancy rate, yeah, I don't have that number.
The last, they checked the vacancy rate, sir, I believe in November, it was 21% vacancy rate.
Okay, it's gonna be hard to catch up.
Cruise level.
It's gonna be hard to catch up if you're, if you have, if you don't have 20% of the people hired, right? So what are you doing in order to work with HR to get, to get those positions filled?
Yeah, we currently have, you know, going to LinkedIn and then other, I guess, websites to try to promote the recruiting. My network, my personal network, is I do have networks, you know, of people that I can hire. We do have a hurdle in that we do require a CDL for the Tech III positions. And so we're working with HR to see if, you know, there's something that we can work around that so that we can get people that are, either have the skill sets to do, you know, certain levels of work at the Tech III, or get work coordinators filled without that requirement as well, because right now, we don't have the work coordinators for some of the programs in our, in our street group. But right now, I would say, I don't, I haven't seen anything that will affect our current production rate. For my current crews, my mill, my mill and overlay crew, they're, they're fully staffed. And so the one that I'm trying to staff is my utility cut crew to, I guess, fulfill my obligations to the utility department. That one is, is still needing to be staffed. But as far as my in-house work, I do have the equipment and the individuals necessary to do that work. Because really, the critical path is, is more so the pavers, you know. And I have two pavers, and so really, one is the one that we mainly have going, and we always have it ready and able to go. I haven't had any instances where they're both, they've both been down. So really, that's the critical path, is do I have the paver and the materials to do the work? And that, that determines my production rate. And so if I'm ever in a position where I don't have paving crews and the paver's just sitting there, then, then I'd have a problem. But right now, I don't have that problem specifically.
Okay, considering, considering now you're, you're behind, is it realistic to expect that you'll be able to catch up within the next year? If not?
We're doing, so we're gonna do 45 projects of the, of the, what we're calling the reactive maintenance, the one that Mr. Zanoni just mentioned, and so those are gonna go fast. If we end up in situations where we have full debt repair, it's gonna slow us down.
Yeah, Councilman, can I add to that? So we, we know we're behind now with the new leadership with Ernesto. One of the things Nieman is gonna work, or has been working with him on, is what is the recovery plan? Can we augment with contract crews to get caught up? Do we move projects to 2023 and 2024? That's, that's what's coming to the council. We're gonna be, we're gonna be presenting that to you. We're not gonna keep coming to the council saying we're behind, we're behind, we're behind. We're gonna get either caught up.
Well, the reason, the reason I ask that is because there's an expectation when somebody goes to the website.
Exactly.
And sees their street, it's supposed to be done in a certain year, and it's not done.
Right, exactly. That's what I was gonna say. So what we're gonna do is reset kind of the IMP to say, okay, here's the reset. These projects move to '24, or we're gonna get them done, but it's gonna be the later fall this year. This city, for the first time, has this material online. We didn't have, we didn't even have a five-year plan. So now we have a five-year plan where every year, we add a fifth year. It's transparent. One of our biggest mottos in our business and government here is being open to the community. So all that's online. People can see what street, when it's gonna get done. And the only way it can change is by council vote. Ernesto can't say, you know what, I think I'll do this other street project. No, the council, as the body, has to approve any change to that five-year plan and add the fifth, the new fifth year on. So we know we're, we know we have to reset it. We're, we're developing that now with Ernesto, and then we're gonna bring it back to the council for adoption.
And just for reference, we wanna remember Richard Martinez for putting that five-year plan in place.
Yeah, we're real thankful for him.
The, the other question I have for you is that a lot, a lot of the situations we had in previous years were the fact that we didn't assign any budget to curb and gutter repair, or, because you can't do the street without some of the curb issues. You're kind of circumventing that by this program you're doing. But a lot of, I mean, if you would do this properly, you would kind of go through ahead of time, do the curb and gutter first, and then come back and then do the overlay afterwards, right? So where are you on the curb and gutter program?
Assistant Director of Public Works, Gabriel Nosa. So last budget season, we increased our life cycle curb and gutter CIP program. It was half a million the year before to, I believe, 1.5 million this year. So that'll be contractual services to get ahead of those street projects, to get flat work, curb and gutter done. So yes, we did increase our CIP plan for, for that exact scenario.
So with that, you gotta mesh these too, right? Because a lot of these reconstructions have the flat work issue, right? You have to redo the flat work. But in terms of the actual in-house stuff where you do have some issues, and I can think of, you know, one that's in my district where the drainage is on, on either side of the, of the block, and there's nothing in between, and it, and over time, it's, it's changed, and so it puddles up in the center. And Ernest, we'll go and look at that when we go on our tour on Thursday. But you have to address that through curbs and gutters first, before you go and do any, any, any work on it. Is this, is this also for in-house work?
Yes, sir. So we do have in-house concrete crews, so, you know, situations like that where it's a certain size of curb and gutter, it's not full length down the street, our in-house crews can get to those kind of situations that you're speaking.
Okay. And my last question is with regards to alleyways. Obviously, there are several alleyways that we, we own as a city, because they were turned over to us, but they're not a part of your, of the IMP. Are we gonna be adding those here in the next cycle?
Yeah, we're looking at those as part of our, I guess, reprioritization approach. But, you know, to be honest, the budgets are limited, so we prioritize based on the arterials and residential streets. But we are looking at the costs and then the ability to share those costs with all the current programs, the four programs in the IMP. Because as you know, there, alleys weren't included in any of those programs originally. Because as you know, there, alleys weren't included in any of those programs originally. And so now we have to find a way to get them in there.
Okay, I mean, it's still a road that our solid waste trucks use and they do a lot of damage. And I have to disagree completely on parts of what you said about the design. Not only is the design issue, but also the way we changed our solid waste trash pickup. We went from being in the middle of the street to being on, closer to the side with the, the automatic pickup arm. So it's changed on how that, the damage to the street takes place and what it does to the curbs and gutters. That also applies within those alleyways. So if you, and we'll, we'll go and look at it because I know Gabriel has seen it, that some of the damage where people can't even get into their driveways because the damage is so bad. So we've got to find a solution for those alleyways. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Rodney, it's 12 noon. I know we have a couple more comments, but we're going to go ahead and break, go to public comment and then we'll come back to, to finish the questions or comments on this presentation. Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Risley, would you please review the council rules of decorum?
Citizens are authorized and encouraged to present their views to the council on city-related matters. However, such should be done in a factual, precise presentation and questions of council or staff are inappropriate. Loud, boisterous, profane, or obscene language or behavior is not allowed.
Thank you, Mr. Risley. So individuals will be called up in, in the order in which they signed up electronically. In-person public comments will be taken first, followed by virtual public comment. Corpus Christi residents will take precedence over non-residents. And for those commenting in person, I would just like to remind everyone that a recording is being made of the meeting. Please speak into the microphone located at the podium. State your name and address prior to speaking. There are two opportunities in which you can make public comment on an agenda item. The first is at this present time and the second is at the time that we actually discuss the item. So please choose one. Citizen comments are limited to three minutes while non-resident comments are limited to one. For those commenting in person, there is a timer underneath the base of the microphone. It will let you know exactly how much time you have left to speak. Once the buzzer goes off, if you would kindly conclude your comments. If you have a petition or any other information pertaining to your subject matter, if you'll please give it to our city secretary before you speak and she will hand it out to us. So with that, we will start with Mr. Jack Gordy.
Jack Gordy, and I live at 40, or 3913 Montego. They just passed out papers to you that I got from the city. And this city council, it's time, if you're going to be the city council and represent the city, it's time to take action on what the city paid outside lawyers. The last count I got, we got 26 lawyers on the city's payroll. We might have more now, but 26 lawyers. And last year, they paid out to outside attorneys $5,367,972. Over $5 million they paid to outside attorneys. Now, if you look at the stuff that they paid for, if, if the city attorneys are attorneys, I know good and well, they can take care of some of it. Simple stuff. So there's no point in hiring an outside attorney and using our tax dollars when we, when the city attorneys should be able to take care of it. If they can't, we don't need them. It's time this city council finds out why. There's no point in spending $5 million for outside attorneys when we got 26 on the city's payroll. Allowing that proves one thing, that you don't care about the way our tax dollars are spent. Because there's no sense in paying that much out for outside attorneys. Not, one law firm in five days got paid six payments at $46,000 apiece. Six payments in five days. That's a little bit ridiculous. So this city council needs to look into it and put a stop to it.
Thank you, Mr. Gordy.
Yeah, Mayor, thanks. I did want to comment and we appreciate Mr. Gordy. We're just as mindful as taxpayer monies. We want to make sure we're spending them wisely. Just for some context here, the, the city attorney's budget for the fiscal year is only $3 million. So I'm not sure where the $5 million number comes from. We'll look at his spreadsheet. We just got it here this morning. So the entire budget for the legal department's $3 million. Mr. Gordy's saying we spent $5 million, so we'll look into that.
Mr. Gordy?
We just want to make sure the community gets the right information, you know?
Right, before you leave, because he is the one inquiring, I'd like for that information to please be relayed to Mr. Gordy as well.
Right, we'll, we'll even send him the line on a budget. It's online, but we'll send it to him.
Wonderful.
One other thing too to point out is we do get sued as an entity. We're not out there trying to drum up lawsuits. So we get sued for numerous things and we want to defend the taxpayer. So there is times when we need expert legal advice. And Miles does have competent staff and attorneys, but sometimes some of the cases are complex, narrow-nitched. And so we do use outside attorneys as part of our business model like any other city to help save taxpayer money.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Zanoni. Cheryl Valtzmyer Rios and then Adam, if you want to come to the front seat. Homer Mendoza would be after that, if you want to come to the front row as well. Is Homer here?
Yes, there he is.
Hello. I just, I'm Cheryl Valtzmyer Rios, 901 North Upper Broadway, Corpus Christi, Texas. I am the new executive director for CC Patch, which is leading up the rehabilitation of the Ritz Theater downtown. I wanted to come and introduce myself. I'm excited that we got an award. I came on board and they had this contest for downtown. I said, okay, we're going to do it. So within four days, we had a window display with live mannequins and participating in downtown Corpus Christi and the Mayor's Mariest Decor Contest. So I just want to say I'm, I'm really excited about our project. It's been a long time coming. The building is almost 100 years old. We opened up in 1929. I think the last full-fledged event that went on in there was in 1989. And of course, downtown at that time was kind of moving to the south side and population was going that way in that direction. And so, but now with the revitalization of downtown, we have big things to look forward to. We have got a lot of people on board to make this project happen. And that's all I wanted to say is that we have got a great downtown. And when this theater opens back up, it's going to take us to another level. People are excited to come here and visit Corpus Christi. It's beautiful and we'll have another place for us to have, offer our community interest.
Thank you. Thank you, Cheryl.
Adam Rios, yeah, it's my wife. It's weird, I still use my old address, 7301 Tangled Ridge Court. I'll switch that soon, I promise. Safety first, here to talk about BMX Park as usual and the promotion of Salinas Park and what we have going on downtown. Really quick though, on a side note, I know that there was a proclamation earlier by the city about this being human trafficking month and I just wanted to shine some light on something that's very dear to me and members of the indigenous community. It's called missing murdered indigenous women. There are no national statistics for specifically native women who are murdered or go missing. Some cases are as recent as a month, some go as far back as 12 years. Just wanted to shine a little light on that because it does happen everywhere. Outside of that, on a more positive note, I wanted to bring some attention that I personally received, or actually, I need to stop saying that, the city received regarding Cole Park Skate Park. And this came from a skate shop in Dallas and they're called The Point Skate Shop. And they were completely shocked by our skate park. And they brought some attention to it on social media, as well as some private conversations and some merchandise that I received from them. They were looking forward to coming down to Corpus at some point and being involved in the South Texas Contest Series and bringing their teams down and again showcasing the skate park we have. They were like, why you got water behind you? That you're like, you're like Venice Beach, only a cleaner version, you know? And so that brought a lot of joy to me because that's what I was trying to do, you know, with all this, is bring some positive light to it. Speaking of social media, I was hoping maybe we could get together with the city and Parks and Rec. And Mr. Dodd has, has been incredible. He's, he's, we've been working hand in hand with developing the future of skate parks and BMX parks. But I was wondering if there's a way we could get together and create a specific social media site for our skate parks and our BMX parks to draw some attention to those, especially on a, on a state level, a national level with sponsors. The kids that are doing these things with skateboarding BMXing on social media are so ahead of the game. Like, I think that I'm doing a pretty good job on my personal media site, but I go on there and I see these photo, these photos and these videos and these sponsors that they're getting and this attention that they're bringing to their parks. So maybe we could get together and collaborate on something like that. It reminded me of years ago, Corpus actually hosted Velocity Games. I don't know if anybody remembers that, but that was our version of X Games. And I actually am really good friends with one of the guys who moved here specifically to Corpus to promote that event. And unfortunately, after a couple of years, it floundered. But things were different 25 years ago in terms of what the city was accepting and in terms of like alternative sports. So hopefully down the road, we can make that happen. I had so much more to say. Anyway, I'll be at Salinas Park this afternoon in this weather. We're going to get together with Mr. Dodd. We have some soil suggestions. We have some planning to do. I was, I'm trying my best to bring solutions to him and not just come up here and talk about problems, like actual solutions, like the types of soils that we're going to need. And I know that the city, like the skate park, is always open to meeting me and my peers because again, working together, we can save a lot of money and a lot of headaches down the road if we do this together and do it right. Because there's a lot more that goes into it. When I was 12, draw a triangle on a piece of paper and say, I'm going to go build that ramp outside, you know? A little more high-tech these days. But thank you all for your time, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Adam. Homer Mendoza?
Yes, ma'am, can I wait till the item comes?
Oh, the item, okay, yes, sir. No problem. Yes, sir.
Your point of information, what was the item?
Item nine.
Item nine? Is that on the consent agenda? Does that need to be pulled off?
It's probably, we'll handle that, yes.
Alicia Casparitas, if you'll come to the front, Garrett and Garrett Dorsey. Is Garrett here? There you are. You want to come up front? Okay. Reverend, go right ahead.
To the mayor, city councilmen and women, Mr. Zanoni, city secretary. The nature of my being here today, it has to do with two things. The first has to do with the cost of vehicle impoundment as it affects someone who is, who is poor. Day before yesterday, I received a call from a lady whose vehicle had been impounded. And it had been impounded because she was unable, she was unable to repair the rear light. She did not have insurance because she was not, she could not pay her insurance premium. Her vehicle, she received a ticket and her vehicle was impounded. The impoundment cost for one day was $230. If she could not repair her vehicle and if she could not pay for her insurance, she would have no way to pay the impoundment charge. Our church assisted, first, the insurance. Her insurance premium in the area of $170 plus the impoundment charge, $230. I asked the lady at the impoundment facility why the prices were so high. She said that it had to do with a city ordinance. What I would like for you to do is to look into that ordinance and see if there is not a way that a more reasonable manner of assisting people whose vehicles are impounded, okay, that they may be given a manner in which to, to obtain their vehicle without such excessive charges, okay, upfront. Okay, secondly, if that vehicle had not been paid for the first day, the charges would have increased. And they would have increased substantially, day by day. City councilmen and women, if you would, would you look into that, please? I would ask. Secondly, our nation, our nation is in a time of troubles. May I continue? Or may I come back?
Well, you get the three minutes, but you can, you can conclude your, your sentence.
Well, I'd like to speak to you all concerning, it has to do with the amount of violence in our nation right now. In 1996, in Corpus Christi, we had an excessive problem of violence in this, in our city. There were drive-by shootings, children were getting shot, okay, in their homes. Violence was out of control. In 1995, Selena Kintanilla had been shot. Prior to that, a young man had, a young man had gotten angry at his workplace because he felt that he was unjustly treated. And here in Corpus Christi, this young man killed about five people in his workplace, okay? In 1996, Pete Alvarez became police chief. Due to the conditions of our city where violence, violence was concerned, he initiated five, seven committees.
Reverend, I, we, we need to wrap it up because of three minute, excuse me, three minutes are up. But we do invite you, you are very, very welcome to reach out to council members.
May I come back and speak?
Well, today you have the three minutes. You can only come up once.
Only once?
Yeah, but like I said, you can call us or you can email us. There are other ways than, than, than just here. But unfortunately, we, we, not unfortunately, but we must follow the, the council.
Well, I certainly don't want to violate your rules.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate you very much.
Hi, hi. Oh, wow, sorry. I'm Alicia Casparitas, 4657 Ocean Drive. I'm the interim executive officer of the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association. And on the behalf of the association, I am commenting on Agenda Item 17, the adoption of the ICC 2021 Building Codes. Our association, association just wanted to say that Michael Dice, Assistant Director of Development Services, along with his entire team, worked very closely with our organization on updating to the most recent version of the codes. The development services team was a fantastic organization to work with and communicate with on this task. Their hard work has created an agreeable update to the 2021 Building Codes in which our organization is happy to support, so.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Gary Dorsey.
Good morning. Garrett Dorsey, 2037 Sunnycrest in Flower Bluff. Just like to say, welcome to the new city council for 2023 here. Look forward to working with a lot of you. I am the education and scholarship chairman for the Coastal Bend Home Builders Association. We've done some great things with Delmar College and working with the Delmar community. I am also the affordable housing chairman. And as you know, we've been doing some really great things with Thanksgiving Homes and really doing some great things with our inner city and our vacant lots. A lot of times we hear about these blights on our communities and these lots. So I'd just like to say thank you for working with us and the group and also with development services, working on what we can do and hopefully what we can do more in 2023 on these infill lot programs. So again, just would like to say welcome and thank everybody. And I see a lot of faces that, up there, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Gary. Oh, I'm sorry, Garrett. Armon Alex.
Hey, Mayor, well, Armon's coming up. I just, can I add to Garrett?
Yes.
So he and I spoke the other day on the steps of City Hall. But there's some tremendous work they're doing off, off of Ayers with some infill housing. It's beautiful. I may even bring it to city council in a city council report to show the improvement that, that the affordable.
I think that would be a good idea.
Right, that they've done over there. So we appreciate it, Garrett, for the work that you've done. And we'll be showing that to council soon.
Wonderful, thank you. Armon.
Don't start the time yet, I just wanted to apologize.
No, no, yeah, your time starts after everything's passed out.
Alrighty, my name is Armon Alex, 1610 La Jolla Street, District 3. Today marks approximately one month since 224,000 cups of crude oil polluted our Corpus Christi bay. Since Since then, no significant action has been taken by council to prevent future disasters of this matter. Our community continuously finds toxic remnants washing up on our shorelines, even till this very day. I went out yesterday to North Beach and collected a handful. On January 10th, I visited this governing body and informed you all that our city was not prepared for this man-made environmental disaster, and I showed you all a five-gallon bucket of crude oil our team had found the day before on January 9th. On January 11th, city management released a statement that read, "No significant material or sheen has been confirmed in the last nine days." That was misinformation. This disaster is a gleaming example of how our city just simply was not prepared to handle this situation, but it does not have to be that way going forward. For over a year now, we have approached this council advocating for you all to develop a committee on city resilience and sustainability. And I want to be really clear here, because I do believe that if our city had followed those requests, we would have seen a trained rapid-response team deployed to gather the necessary and accurate information needed to keep our community informed and safe. Since the last time I was here, to our disappointment, only two new members of this council took immediate action in this case and reached out to our organization to discuss our solution we had proposed. For the, for, for the other seven members of this council and for city management that did not take immediate action to help, to reach out to us, to secure a safe future for our community, I have one thing to say, it is not too late to be on the right side of history. Our team alongside homeowners and committed, committed voters have developed a drafted outline of a committee, city, committee, city, a committee on city resilience and sustainability. It is based on extensive research, expert advice, and successful examples of prosperous communities in Texas and other coastal communities throughout the United States. Let it be known for public record that we have officially put that right before you in your hands, a draft proposal. It is a living, breathing document meant for revision and input, but it is a very large step forward for our community in the right direction. And in full transparency, it already has been made publicly available through our social media platforms, including overwhelming support of residents in Corpus Christi. I encourage you all to genuinely read through it. Council members and city management, please reach out to our team at the Gulf of Mexico Youth Climate Summit and work with us to develop this. And lastly, I want to leave you all with the current mission statement on the city website under mayor and city council. The mission statement says, "Our mission is to make Corpus Christi one of the most livable communities in America, to create a vibrant, progressive, clean city that rejoices in its diversity, to keep our citizens safe and secure and provide an abundance of economic development opportunities while paying special attention to our unique environment. Please reach out to us to follow through on this commitment to your constituents. It's not too late to be on the right side of history." Thank you all for all that you do.
Thank you, Armon. That concludes our in-person comments. I think we have two. Sharen Delusez?
Yes, ma'am.
And Christopher Phelan. Okay.
Ms. Delusez?
Hi, Sharen Delusez, 6030 Tapas Street. Please play video. I'm here to advocate for protected bike paths. This is a protected bike path that we would like. This is a protected bike path that we would like. This is not a protected bike path. And these weird green sidewalks that we have around town are not protected bike paths. They're designed for legs, not wheels. We don't design roads like this. They merge onto sidewalks every block, and no cyclist I spoke to likes them. You may be wondering if the bike paths we have are sufficient, and it isn't. I'm telling you, this is not my opinion. The American Public Journal of Health claims that protected bike paths reduce injury by 90%. Look at a real-life example. You may think that Ocean Drive has plenty of space, but cars are always swerving onto the bike paths. You might be wondering, well, not a lot of people cycle. 12% of Americans don't drive. This includes students, low-income earners, minimum-wage earners, homeless people, people who can't get a driver's license for medical reasons, unable to get a driver's license for legal reasons, seniors, environmentalists, people who like to exercise, people who like to have fun. Well, you might say that not all these people cycle. Well, many do, and not all drivers are exclusively drivers. One in three Americans own a bike. When the city makes transportation plans, road plans, protected bike paths are never considered in Corpus Christi. There are estimated 12% of people who cycle, and they're left out. That's like 40,000 residents in Corpus Christi. No taxation without representation. If we can tax everyone equally, you should make reasonable efforts to accommodate for everyone's transportation needs. Everyone. This is not just a statistic. I see a lot of bikes, especially at schools. Even elementary schools. Are we just going to ignore the safety needs of even children? I see even more bikes at a homeless shelter. A volunteer literally told me that a bike means the difference between getting a meal and starvation. I talked to many local cyclists, essential workers, a lot of seniors, and tourists. They all would like to have protected bike paths. Please check out my Instagram at IBikeCC as I share their stories. The FHA Design Guides for Protected Bike Paths are very easy to follow. They clearly state the measurements and design principles. For more information on why we need protected bike paths, check out my website that I made at IBikeCC.com. Yeah, I seriously don't understand why it's been many years I've been advocating for this. I give you guys the facts, and we're still ignoring protected bike paths. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Delusez. Christopher Phelan?
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I make a, she's been coming here, I mean, having the videos every week, I think. I think it's time that our city manager at least pointed her to the right direction as to maybe some of the suggestions that she's making.
Yeah, Councilwoman Campos, she, she's had numerous in-person conversations with our engineering director, Jeff Edmonds, who's a cyclist himself. So we have, we have reached, we have engaged her. We do admittedly have a bike program that could be improved, we all know that. This council has been focused on the pavement section for the vehicles first. We have, we just talked about it, and we're gonna talk back about it after a citizen comment. We're kinda behind in our street maintenance program, so the focus has been, let's get this backlog of streets, residential streets. But we're mindful of bike lanes. We've put them in as much as we can. The conversation of protected bike lanes is one of an expense, really. It's, it's, what do we focus on? And that's the council's, that's the council's policy decision and discussion. And we can have that as a, as a body either now or during the budget process, during that retreat. Some cities dedicate money for protected bike lanes. We do have a bike master plan that we can re-review. We had money proposed, but ultimately was, we couldn't afford it, to review that MPO bike master plan, so that's available. So there's a lot of moving parts. We're listening. We appreciate those videos. We appreciate her professionalism and how she communicates to us. That's always respected by us here at City, at City Hall. So I think it's coming. It's just a matter of, of decisions and priorities that we have to make, the council has to make especially. We won't argue the safety. We know they're very safe. But every city that does do them knows that there's a trade-off. It's an expense. It's, and sometimes, in that video, what wasn't shown is when you put it in protected lanes, you lose turning movements into shopping centers and so on, so they're not 100% foolproof. But in our new design especially, that's a good place to put them, because then you can redesign, reconstruct approaches into developments and neighborhoods and that type of thing. So it's important, it's coming, it's coming to our city, and we appreciate cyclists' enthusiasm. And, and then just to go back to your original statement, we have engaged her numerous times, and we will continue to do so.
I would appreciate that. And maybe if I could be included in that conversation, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Phelan?
Chris Phelan, 3806 Kingston Avenue. I'd like to discuss a few things, like one of them's public safety, and I know I can't go over my three minutes because I'm not part of the cheerleading squad. It's really disrespectful to see, you know, a venerable member of our community like Reverend Williams get cut off when other people are allowed to run over. You know, that's, that's indicative of, of the way this city has always operated. You know, you haven't heard from me in a bit. Unfortunately, I lost both of my parents recently. I lost my dad to COPD, and I lost my mom to cancer. My mom, that's the fifth member of my family that I lost to cancer. You know, but some members of council, even though their families are riddled with it, take money from the same people. We wake up to spilling oil all in our bay. You have led us along the Primrose Path with this desalination. We told you that it wasn't gonna be uninterruptible. How can anybody up there say that it was gonna be uninterruptible? Would you have run your desal plant during your oil spill? On Sunday, a bulk carrier from Saudi Arabia ran into one of the local tugboats. That tugboat is sitting on a shoal right now in the, right off the Ship Channel, right off of Ingleside, where we used to build offshore platforms, where we could have built offshore wind, but instead is now just oil tanks. And people here are in such a rush to ship off all of this oil and gas, right? And, and our, our fire department, on, on Christmas Day, they went out to the corner of Saratoga and Old Brownsville Road for a gas leak, a gas leak that they call an ongoing problem. But it's not the city's gas leak, it's one of the big pipelines that comes through town. I wanna know if the city, so they've referred this over to the pipeline company, we're getting these methane calls all over the South Side. The, and the, the fire department goes and checks and says, "Well, we need to refer to the water department, or we need to refer to public services," because it's not a gas leak, it's methane. Well, where's the methane coming from? Huh? The methane's coming from gas pipelines out there, and, and residents are calling it in. Does the city escalate this to the Texas Railroad Commission? Or do y'all just sit on it? We've got pipeline leaks in our city, they leak methane over in Hillcrest. That's where my mom was born, was in Hillcrest. She was born over there with baphoria and allergic to the sun, and then she died of cancer at 70 years old. And I wake up on Christmas and the base full of the oil that we all knew was coming. Then y'all said y'all were gonna be picking up our water out of there. The first you said it was water for us, then you had to admit it was water for industry.
Thank you, Mr. Phelan.
Now you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Phelan. We appreciate it. Mayor, that concludes the public comment period. Also, the, today we had two zoning cases scheduled for, for public hearing. The gentleman who was here to speak on the zoning case, he was actually gonna speak about one of the zoning cases that was rescheduled. So just to let the public know, the Arriba Development zoning case, if someone was here for that, that zoning case has been rescheduled to February the 14th. And the Mustang Island zoning case has been postponed to a date to be determined, but... Mr. Mendoza? Yes. He identified item number nine. Yes, and item number nine is a consent item. When we went to speak with him, he was actually gonna speak about the Arriba one. He wanted to speak during the hearing. So it's not item number nine? No, ma'am. It was item number nine? Uh, maybe. I'm not sure where he got that number. Okay. Where is Mr. Mendoza? Where's Mr. Mendoza? No, that, we have Cypress points, Cypress points on here, but there were two that we sent notices out for and had advertised for today, but they've been rescheduled. Yes, sir. Okay. So item number nine, okay, I looked at nine because it said nine, and I thought he was here for that. No, we just didn't, since he wanted to speak during the hearing, there wasn't a hearing today, so he was gonna come back. Right. So you let him know? Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay, so that concludes our public comment, and we are going to go back. Let's see, where are streets? There we go.
Okay, here comes our streets, correct?
Yes. We have a couple of comments.
Right.
And then we'll conclude streets. Councilman Pusley?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Okay, just real quickly on the overlay treatment that you're talking about, Ernie. I took the city manager and a couple of other staff members with me on a ride the other day, and I really didn't wanna do that, but I was always jealous of the fact that Councilman Hernandez said that he took the city manager for a ride, so.
He's always taking rides everywhere.
So, so now I'm right in the league there with Councilman Hernandez, so, anyway. Yeah, thank you. Could we utilize that same principle for, one of the things I showed you, Ernie, is I've had these discussions with you, we've, we have many industrial boulevards and industrial parks here in Corpus Christi that are in dire need of major reconstruction, but in light, in lieu of that, could we do one of these overlay treatments?
Sir, so to answer your question is, a two-inch overlay will not fix the need for the industrial...
You're gonna have to talk louder, because I'm deaf in one ear and I can't hear out the other one.
A two-inch overlay that we usually use on our residential streets will not work for the industrial street. It will probably last maybe six months at the most. We currently are getting together a reclaiming team to use a reclamer to add cement to that base and then cover it up with hot mix. So we're in the process of that. To, to answer Councilman Hernandez's previous question, I just texted team and I found out the answer is, the question was, we currently have one overlay team, we need five more positions to be filled to, to have two overlay teams plus a reclamer team. And so, once we have these five positions filled, we will have the two overlay teams, which will increase our production rate, and then in addition to that, we'll get the reclamer going. So I'm meeting with the manufacturer of that reclamer this month, and then the hope is to use the reclamer for the industrial streets as, as the fix.
Yeah, unfortunately, the city has to compete with not only the, the upswing in oil and gas industry, but all the big, major paving companies are extremely busy too, and they probably pay a lot better than us. Okay. I just, I just want to ask.
Councilman, I think the answer is yes. So the reclamer was, is a brand-new piece of equipment that we bought under Richard's leadership.
Yeah.
And Ernie's getting his crews geared up to use it, so it will be a different treatment, but similar principle, which is sooner than later, using a reclamer to give it better durability so that they won't fail in six months.
Okay. And, and last question, so in the discussion about, or the comments I had back before the end of the year about what streets we tackle first in, in the repaving process, we just had this study done that where the company went out and surveyed all of our streets and gave us an index chart of, you know, the worst streets compared to the better streets. Can we put together an intersection of what that report showed versus what we think we're gonna go out and do over the next, because I know the bond programs are like, we, we have to fix specific streets with the bond money. I understand that. But with the money that we have budgeted for street repair, can we look at that in, in a way that we could come back and, and say, "Okay, this is..." Man, I'm having a hard time getting this explained.
Yeah, I think, Councilman, I think the answer, the answer is yes, so that, that information will be, we're gonna come back to council maybe in two months or so to reset the IMP, to say, "You know what? We thought we were gonna do this street, but this new index shows us that this one's actually a lot worse."
Yeah.
Is that, that's what you're referring to?
Yeah, so did the, and I don't remember, it's just been a few months since we saw that report. Did they break those down by collectors, neighborhood streets? So it's, it's already categorized by that?
Yes.
Okay, I need to go back and look at it.
And to answer your question, when we, with a cartograph, we'll be able to put in proposed project scenarios and then explain what the anticipated outcome is of PCI index with proposed project scenarios.
Okay. Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Councilman Roy?
Yeah, so I, you know, one of the questions I wanted to ask earlier, we, we know that, I think you said earlier that we're about 10 years, we were projected 10 years. With this new method, it's gonna catch us up a little bit in terms of being where we need to be maintenance-wise. But in the interim, one of the things that I think is reality is that when people call 311 and they ask for pothole repairs, right? And we go out, or we're supposed to go out, and do pothole repairs. One of the number-one things I'm hearing is, is that within a week or two later, it's back to where it was before. So, you know, we know that even in the, in the best-case scenario, that 10 years may be limited down to two or three years. The reality is that pothole repairs are not gonna go away. What I don't understand, and I've watched this, we're freshly... What I don't understand, and I've watched this, where freshly repaired pothole, two days later, it sunk. Is there something we can do to do a study, to do a better job in terms of maybe the material, or whatever we're using, so that at least we can fix that problem? Because that's probably the number-one thing that does the most damage to people's cars, and that's what I hear a lot of, whether it's District One or all over the city. And I've been to other cities, and they have pothole repair, and one of the things I don't understand is that when they repair their potholes, they seem to stay repaired for a longer period of time. So I don't know what we have to do on that, but I think it would go a long way while people are being patient and waiting on their streets to, you know, if we repair those potholes, to do it where it will at least last. Thank you.
Yes, sir, we 100% agree, we have seen that common problem exist where potholes are being repaired, just four weeks later or another rain event for them to uproot. So our solution versus, like, doing the study or analysis is discussions that's being had with staff, and lose to what the city manager was discussing regarding skin patching, where we're going to look at these streets that are habitual offenders of having multiple potholes, and the potholes just reappear, we want to start doing that light overlay, I mean, that light milling, and then doing the overlay to replace that pavement.
But from a labor standpoint, you can't do that right away. You get 10 people that call and say, you know, my street needs a pothole, you guys go out and assess, you're not going to be able to probably, I don't think, repair those 10 streets and do that all at one time, right?
Not all at one time, no.
No, so what I'm saying is, the reality is, especially if it's a deep pothole, and it's caused some problems, I got a phone call on, I think it's Hern Road, where there was a really deep one, that was probably about a foot deep. You've got to repair those or do something in the interim, because they can't wait. Even if it's six months, it's not appropriate for them to wait. So the reality is, potholes aren't going to go away. So I think we need to really spend some time looking at fixing them correctly, using a different type of material, maybe consulting with some other cities or something.
Yeah, Councilman, can I, not to interrupt you, but Ernie, let's have, Ernie will talk about the business of them, but just some background, so in the past four years, we have switched more to a hot mix. So in the past, four years ago, we were using a lot of cold mix. It's basically asphalt in a bag, so to speak, it's cold, it doesn't have any gelling or material in there that will keep it together. And so when rain hits, or a lot of traffic hits, that stuff begins to loosen up and come away, because it doesn't have any cement bonding material in there. So Public Works in recent times has won, but with council's approval, equipment to keep the asphalt hot, having an asphalt patcher truck. We ordered a couple, and Ernie will talk about their, if they came in, we have, I think, two or three, and we needed more, so we have ordered more. But that's the solution, is using hot mix rather than cold mix, and prepping the hole correctly.
Are we using any cold mix at all now?
We do, yeah, so if there's a rain event, like if you have a, even if it's, you know, not heavy, heavy rain, but soggy rain weekends, the plants that sell hot aggregate aren't always open, either because it's the weekend, or their plant's down for maintenance. So in extreme cases where the pothole's a danger, we do have to use that cold mix. It's not a good solution, we know it, but the fix is making sure we have the right equipment, and that's what we've been doing with even your help years ago on the council. So we have bought pothole patching trucks that we didn't have. In the past, we used a dump truck with a bunch of cold mix and threw it in the hole and hoped it stayed, it doesn't, because it doesn't have any bonding material in the aggregate. So, Ernie, are our new trucks in yet?
Yes, well, to your point, I do agree that the cold mix is a temporary fix, and our hot mix is a better approach. And as city managers and only I just mentioned, we're limited to when they're producing hot mix to have that good approach. What we're not doing as a programmatic function is that when we go do the cold mix or the all-weather mix, we are not going back and then cutting it out and then putting hot mix in there. Maybe that's an option, but again, we're just going to put the cold mix, and then if it gives out, we'll go back with the hot mix if we can. But to your point, the only real solution would be to put the cold mix, come back later, remove it, put hot mix, and then that'd be a known, permanent fix, but that's not part of our program. Our program is, we'll have a safety issue, we'll mitigate it with either cold mix or hot mix, whatever is readily available, and then we'll come back later if it happens again.
What percentage right now, when you go out and do a pothole repair, would you say that you're doing hot mix?
I can't get you that number, I can get you that number, but I don't have it in front of me.
If you could, I would appreciate that, because I think that would explain a lot. If you're doing hot mix 25% of the time, and cold mix 75% of the time, then that's probably what we're seeing. If you're telling me you're doing hot mix 80% of the time, and cold mix 20, you know, that's a whole other story. So if you could get that information, I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir, and our preference is hot mix, so that's our preference, if it's available.
Thank you.
Councilman Suckley?
Sorry, since we've gotten off on the pothole discussion here, me being new to council, we have a large number of, a large percentage of our roads in the Coastal Bend area that are maintained by TechDOT. So when our community members have a pothole that may be a TechDOT responsibility, can you tell me kind of how that's handled by the 311 system, and whether that's sent to TechDOT to handle, or whether the city handles it in conjunction with just trying to handle potholes in our community, or what?
I don't know, I don't know if it's being, if it's going in from 311 out to TechDOT, I have to get with the dispatchers to see if that's the case, because I've, honestly, I've never heard that that has happened. Usually if it's a TechDOT issue, we'll get a call outside of the 311 system, so I'm not sure, I'd have to research that.
Okay, yeah, for example, driving here today, getting off on Agnes, getting off on Crosstown, and there's a huge pothole that's been there right near the right-hand turn lane for probably months. And so it just makes me wonder whether, every time I hit it, I think someone in our community has to have reported it by now. Is it TechDOT's problem, or is it the city problem? So, for example, why would that feeder road on the Crosstown be sitting there with that pothole for months now?
Right. And I can get with TechDOT, I believe they do have a similar version of 311 for their system, online, and I can find out if there's something that you can use.
And I know it's going to be a big educational piece for our community to help tell them which path to follow, report to TechDOT or report to city. So it would be ideal if we had some sort of collaboration in our system to feed those TechDOT-specific potholes to them.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Thanks.
Dan, you might call it in. You could be the first caller. That concludes our questions, thank you very much for the update, gentlemen. So Peter, that takes us into your next presentation.
Right, so we have two other items, if the council is wanting to continue, we want to talk next, pretty quickly, Michael Murphy's going to provide us an update on our water, which is as important as our infrastructure. And next week, on our city council agenda, the draft of which went out yesterday evening, there's two items, not for approval, but for dialogue with the council, that being an update to the drought contingency plan, we're going to recommend some earlier triggers to water restrictions, and we're also going to review with the council the 365 Plan of Conservation and Water Conservation. So that will be next week. We thought today we'd kind of give you, you know, an overview that we're going to be doing that, but today's focus really is on our water levels. They are low, extremely low compared to last year, about 10% points less, percentage points, the combined levels at Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon, 10% lower than last year, same time. And yesterday, in our weekly National Weather Service briefing, our water team, we were advised that for the next several months through April, we can expect hotter-than-normal temperatures and drier-than-normal temperatures. So when you put all that together, a hotter, drier forecast through April, we'll lower in our water reserves than we had last year, same time. We have to be mindful of it and communicate that to the council and the community. So today's is part of that communication, and Mike Murphy's just going to walk through a quick presentation on the situation.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon.
So the first slide is a presentation of our dashboard that you can find at our homepage on the city's website. And lake levels are updated in real time, and as you can see, we're still under a stage one drought, or water restriction, okay? And what we're showing here is that our lake levels are currently at 42.6%, which this time a month ago, we were at 44.1%. This time a year ago, we were at 52%. So what it looks like we're doing is we're entering the spring months at lower historical lows as far as lake levels go, and this is Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon. So let me do the, next slide. So what we're looking at on this map is a drought map from the National Weather Service, and like the city manager was just saying, we meet with the National Weather Service on a regular basis, as recently as yesterday, on the drought. And so this map is updated as recently as yesterday, and you can see from the drought, from the drought map, that the city of Corpus Christi doesn't show to be in a drought, which it could, you know, it is what it is, but that's not what we're concerned with. We're concerned with where we get our water from, the watershed we get from, and the area that is recharging our lakes and rivers. And so you can see from this map, that as you move up to the northeast, that the ongoing drought in Texas is severe to some point, is moderate to some point, and is adnormally dry. So you kind of, if you kind of go up the northeast, you can see that clearly on this map, and that's what we're trying to get across. Now, the recharge zones, the recharge zones are shown on this particular slide, and it's important to remember that the city of Corpus Christi remains to be under stage one, and safe ones restrictions, and it has been 183 days since we initiated drought restrictions, and we continue to closely monitor the situation. And so this is another map from the National Weather Service. As the region water provider for a seven-county area, Coastal Bend, we observe and track ongoing drought in Texas, and we do that very thoroughly, we have frequent contact with the National Weather Service, and we meet with them at least once per week. The Frio River watershed, and Oasis River water basin that you can see on this map, alongside the La Vaca Navidad watershed, and the Lower Colorado River Basin, which are our recharge zones for primary sources of water for Corpus Christi, are still experiencing very dry conditions, and like the city manager was saying, the report yesterday from the National Weather Service and from the NOAA Rainfall Prediction Center are indicating that we're entering this spring with the possibility of high heat and low precipitation. Local rain events like today only offer a short-term benefit, and long-term benefits for our water supply will only come when drought conditions improve in the Frio River watershed, and Oasis River basin, and La Vaca Navidad in Colorado. Or, like what we're working on right now, several different fronts to acquire another source of drought-proof source of water, and add that to our existing portfolio. We encourage our community to continue to monitor closely our dashboard and our drought contingency updates, and we provide that information in real time. And so, like the city manager was just saying, the initiatives that we're going to be bringing forward in next week's briefing will cover drought contingency plan revisions, proposed administrative changes and restrictions and updates, an update and unveiling of our Water Conservation 365 program, developed in, as recently as this past October, and the implementation. The Water Conservation 365 program was developed in line with the budget for this fiscal year, and supports the water conservation plan. Implementation is ongoing with goals of reducing per capita use by 1% annually over the next decade, and we will bring more details within the, with a progress report. So with that said, that's sort of where we're at, that's just a quick snapshot, and then, like we're saying, next week, we're going to come with a full briefing to council. We have attached a redline version of the drought contingency plan for your review, and we'll go over that in greater detail next week.
And can I just add that we know that there's two sides to the equation here, we have the residential, commercial accounts in our over 500,000 residents that we serve, and then we also have large-volume users, industry in particular. And so our work is both, we're going to be coming to council next week to show you what we're recommending on both sides of the customer base. This is not just, we're going to just address the residential customer, which is about 50% of the water use. We know that the other 50% is used by large-volume users, and we have some recommendations and some beginning conversations to have with the council, and that we will carry on with the industry partners as well. We know that they're an important part of our city's history and current city today with jobs and such, but we need to talk on both sides of our customer base, so we'll be ready to do that next week.
Very good, thank you for letting us know that in advance. Councilman Klein?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I didn't hear this, maybe I missed it, Lake Corpus Christi and Choke Canyon, what's the evaporation rate up there on an annual basis?
Yeah, I can get you that information, I don't have it on...
I understand it to be about 51%. Does that sound like a ballpark figure?
That sounds about right, I just don't know. I know, obviously, in hot and windy conditions right now, we're experiencing cooler conditions, but windier conditions, which all, you know, relate to evaporation, and what we're anticipating, I'm not getting around your question, but we're participating somewhere between a half inch to an inch and a half of rain between now and end of the day tomorrow, or Thursday, that's what National Weather Service is saying. And with the windy conditions we have right now, and the dry conditions, we probably will lose most of that water to evaporation or the soil taking it up because it's so dry. But I'll get you the number on what we anticipate.
I think down the road, we need to look at a different type of water storage system, because that's just terribly inefficient. I mean, if I put $100 into a bank in January, and in December I got $50 back, I would not be banking with them anymore, at the very least.
Right.
Right, I mean, that's just terribly inefficient, there's got to be a better way to store water, whether it's underground or something else, something else to mitigate that massive evaporation rate.
Well, the other options that we're looking at, Councilman, is the ground storage program that we're currently pursuing very aggressively right now on the Evangeline wellfield, and then also we're looking at aquifer storage and recovery, we've got a consultant that is reviewing that process also. And then reuse is always a big part of what we're currently doing. We have six wastewater treatment facilities, and we're providing for, I think, three golf courses right now, and the Veterans Memorial, I don't know what you call it, graveyard? But we're working on that. And then you'll see, coming up in this year's budget, a Purple Pipe program that we can use more of our, reuse more of our effluent water. So those are all ways that we can sort of get around the evaporation part of it, then also, as we all know, a desal program that we're moving forward with on the Inner Harbor.
Right, right, and as I understand it, Wichita Falls, I think this is correct, has been one of the leaders in the state in water reusage, but I have to check in to be sure if I got my facts straight there.
Those are all definitely things that we're pursuing actively and aggressively right now. We've got consultants working on all of those fronts, so...
Thank you.
And hopefully, probably by sometime this summer, we'll be able to bring that back to you, where we're at.
Okay, Councilman Pusley?
Michael, two things, one, I brought some information, I gave it to Peter, and I think he passed it on to you, about there's a naturally occurring, and I got this information from Texas Parks and Wildlife, a naturally occurring weed growth around, especially around Lake Corpus Christi, and they were recommending that the city go after that aggressively, because of how much water it absorbs. They gave all kinds of examples in there about, it's tremendous, and I see that, it grows everywhere, and they said that we can use herbicides on it to kill it, it's not going to hurt the lake, or any, you know, the drinking capabilities of it, so we really ought to look at that.
Okay, we'll do that, for sure. Yes, sir.
And then I had another question, but I forgot what it was, sorry.
We'll come back. Councilman Klein, could you turn your, unless you have another question? Councilman Hernandez, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to correct something, on the veterans cemetery, they stopped using our wastewater because it was... They stopped using our wastewater because it had too much saltwater intrusion into it. Since you did bring it up, can you tell us where that stands?
So they're working right now with Dr. Deng on our wastewater. He's the Assistant Director of our wastewater treatment plant. And we're working to come up with ways that we can reduce the salt content in their effluent, or in our effluent, so they can use it for irrigation. So that's something we're actively pursuing with them. And so we'll be looking at that. And also, we've recently heard, or I've recently heard that some of the golf courses are experiencing the same thing. So we're taking a look at our discharge from our wastewater plants to see if we can address that.
Okay, well, you're getting saltwater intrusion somewhere. For the Allison Plant, it was under the understanding that you had some intrusion at some lift stations where during high tide, they get it, they get saltwater intrusion. But if you can, please bring us.
Yeah, at the end of the day, I mean, it's just high in salinity concentration. And we, so we're treating that wastewater and we're trying to make it available. So this is very important to us, and so we're looking at it. And hopefully, we'll have a solution. It may require additional treatment or another step in our wastewater treatment process, but we're looking at those things.
Well, the reason I bring that up is because if they can't use the wastewater, then they have to use freshwater or potable water.
Right, that's exactly.
And that's not, that's not the ideal situation.
Agree. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Hundred percent agree with that.
When do you expect the drought contingency plan to come to council?
I'm sorry?
The next week?
Next week.
It's coming next week. Right, so the amended one's already in your materials we sent out last night. So it'll be, it's not for a vote next week, just to let the council know, just to present it to you so you can have time to review it with us. We'll be doing one-on-one briefings with you as well. And then in February, we'll schedule a council vote on any potential amendments.
Okay, thank you.
Mike, last question, and this is regarding the water releases. So what is the trigger elevation point in which, when we have to release water?
Are you talking about to the basins and estuaries and not for our consumption?
Right.
Yeah, so it really has to depend on what's happening in our watershed above us.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the trigger point. We watch that right now. And since, since pretty much everything to the northeast of us, all of our recharge zones are in a drought. And once, while we're in that drought, we're not required to release water into the basins and estuaries. I'm not sure what that would mean as far as the elevations in our lake levels about a trigger, but I'll find out from our water manager and see if there is, that number exists. And I'll make sure you get.
Well, and the reason I'm asking is I'm getting inquiries regarding Lake Corpus Christi saying, well, the lake is drying up because of the releases. And at some point, it was nine, excuse me, ninety-four feet.
Yep.
Right? So I don't know if that still exists, if that, is that the trigger point? Because didn't we have to do that? Like, it's an absolute, it's full, right? So then at ninety-four feet, right, we, but we have to release.
Yeah, so right now, we are not releasing to the basins and estuaries. And since we've been in this drought, we haven't been releasing to the basins and estuaries, which is not good for them. Our water releases from Corpus Christi are what we need at Owen Stevens to produce potable water. That's what we're doing right now. So right now, there are no releases going into the basins and estuaries. If you do see something that's going, that looks like it's happening, it's probably because whatever rainfall we're getting falls below the dam. But there's been so little rainfall, I don't think that's the issue. But I did check that as recently as yesterday on if we're releasing anything to the basins and estuaries, and we have not. We're not, we haven't been for a while.
Okay, thank you very much. That's, Councilman, do you have another comment? Okay.
I just want to comment. And Peter, this goes back to my challenge to you and the staff for educating the public more. And that is, there are at least three reasons why we release water, one of which is you're discussing now. The other is to send water downs to our water treatment plant. And we need to educate the public on that because most of people out there, and I've said this before, you guys, most of people out there believe that we are, every time they see water running over the dam at La Bonti Park, they're claiming we're releasing that for the fish and the snails in the Back Bay. And that is not true. And they also are not aware of the fact that the city does not control that, that that is something that is forced on us by the state of Texas and the federal government, and we have to abide by those laws. And we have to do a better job of educating the public on that because a great number of people believe that we are the ones doing that.
Right. Well, that's a good point, Councilman. And now that we've got our website up and running and our dashboard is active, we'll add that to it. That's a good.
We've got to do more than a website.
Well, and let me, let me, I'm going to jump in here because I've asked, we've talked about this. This is really about communication. It could be this issue, which is very important because it's, how do people, how do they know? They know what they see. It is very easy for this city to get on the same system that San Antonio has, where everyone gets, and I've sent them to you, a quick text. And I've talked to Peter Collins about it and saying, you know, how difficult is this to do? Because that would be the way to say, here it is. No one's going to look up a website to look up water releases and all that. I mean, they're not. We need to be on a communication platform that everyone is able to receive easily, and that is a text. Because I don't care what meeting I'm at, what dinner party I'm at, my phone is right next to me because I have a mom, I have a dad, and I have a child. I'm typically with my husband. So I've got those three people that no meeting, no event is too important. They will see that text. And we can send everything from, you know, the most critical issues, everything, not everything's critical issue, but everything we want. And this is a perfect example of the population needing, the community needing to know. Whether they understand it or not, doesn't matter. They can read something right in front of them. So I really, I would really like to see that. I don't think it's something out of our realm to be able to achieve, being that we already do reverse alerts and such. And it would be really what the Councilman is referring to, is touching people and making sure they're educated in that way. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. I think that's all. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. We appreciate that. And Mr. Hernandez, that's it.
So Mayor, just one other item Miles is going to present. We wanted to just update the council and the community on some recent information we received, the community received. The Color Times covered it, which was an Environmental Protection Agency letter that was sent to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, on the Port of Corpus Christi's discharge permit for their seawater desalinization permits. We can't talk about the merits of their case because it's not, it's not us managing the port's business. But we did want to just walk the council through some of the terms and some of the differences between their situation and ours so that you'll be better informed and the community will be. That letter was sent, I guess, late last week. The difference, some, one difference is that we don't have a discharge permit yet. And so the letter was speaking to the port's discharge permit that was approved by TCEQ. We're, our permits in the process of technical review at TCEQ. However, last year, when the first letter came out from the EPA to TCEQ, we did reach out to EPA to see would we be reviewed by the EPA as well. We reached out to TCEQ, and they confirmed that most likely we will be reviewed. Our permit, discharge permit will be reviewed by the EPA. So we've had some initial conversations. But Miles is going to walk us through some of the, some of the steps here and some of the letters, just so you're aware. And we'll be here for any questions. But we can't really speak to the port's specific case since that's their business. We're not managing it.
The TCEQ has issued a Texas Pollutant Discharge System, TPDES, discharge permit to the port for a proposed seawater desalination facility on Harbor Island. TPDES permit number oh-one-three-eight-three-four-seven has been subject to disagreements between TCEQ and EPA over their agencies' respective roles in administration of the TPDES program. On September twentieth, twenty-twenty-one, the EPA sent a letter to TCEQ saying it was terminating its waiver of its right to review draft permits for desalination facilities, including the draft permit and application for permit number oh-one-three-three, oh-one-three-eight-three-four-seven. This was not on its face limited to seawater desalination. And this termination of the waiver could potentially be applied to other permits such as brackish water desalination, which has become an essential component of water supplies throughout the Western U.S. On December fifteenth, twenty-twenty-one, the EPA determined that the port's facility was incorrectly classified as a minor facility under federal regulations in the Minor Major Worksheet used by the state to classify the facility. The EPA stated the facility would be discharging processed wastewater as defined under forty CFR one-twenty-two-point-two. Therefore, it should be classified as a major facility. The EPA letter said the following. Forty CFR one-twenty-two-point-two provides major facility means any MPDES, that's National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Facility or Activity, classified as such by the regional administrator or in the case of approved state, the regional administrator in conjunction with the state director. So they essentially said it's a major facility if the EPA classifies it as a major facility. In its December fifteenth letter, the EPA made a determination that the port's D-SAL plant should have been considered a major facility because it involved the discharge of processed wastewater. In making this determination, the EPA pointed to guidance in a footnote that applied to non-municipal facilities. It's unclear from the letter what the guidance would be as applied to the city's facility, but the EPA stated that all desalination facilities should be considered major moving forward. On January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the EPA sent a letter to TCEQ stating, until such time as the TCEQ responds to the interim objection to address the EPA's concerns, the EPA continues to view the permit as a draft permit and not an effective National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permit for Clean Water Act purposes. Therefore, the EPA said the TCEQ's letter did not provide Clean Water Act authorization for the discharge of pollutants to the waters of the United States for the port. The EPA's position concerning the port's TPDES permit is inconsistent with its prior practice and puts local governmental entities into a legal tussle between federal and state authority. We have a necessity for working with both the EPA and the TCEQ. We have to visit both of the, both agencies. Therefore, the city's not going to take a position with respect to the validity or strength of the EPA legal position at this time. The city's permit applications for its water treatment plants are modeled on a rigorous standard of engineering practice that is intended to effectively meet the expectations of regulators. It's different than the ports. Therefore, even if the EPA's analysis ultimately stands, we believe the city will be well-positioned to handle this EPA scrutiny.
Very good. Yeah.
That's a lot of terminology and, but we're watching it closely because we know that we'll be potentially under similar review. But I think the key thing is what Miles says is that we have confidence in our environmental modeling that has been done by the engineer of record, who has been on board with the city for many years since really the councils began in earnest to pursue D-SAL, seawater desalinization. So they've done extreme modeling, they've done water sampling for months and months at a time. And frankly, we're happy that we have more review of that work. And so the EPA, and we said this last year, late last year, when the first letter came out, we're happy with the EPA reviewing our work because it tells the community, it'll help confirm with the community the environmental, lack of environmental impact that D-SAL has on water.
Right, okay. Councilman Hernandez?
This, this is probably not that unexpected, considering this administration, that the EPA would insert their efforts into this process, which is fine, but it kind of goes back to the fact that we didn't, we put all our eggs in the basket, in the D-SAL basket, and didn't pursue other things when we had the opportunity three years ago. And now we're in the situation, I don't, I don't foresee us, or maybe I should ask a question. Where are, how, with this, with the EPA inserting themselves in it, how much further does that push the possibility of actually getting a permit and then actually having water from a D-SAL plant?
Right, when we spoke to, when we spoke to the TCEQ, who had spoken to the EPA late last fall, when we spoke to them, they said about thirty, maybe sixty days additional review time. That's what the EPA told us. I'm sorry, that's what the TCEQ told us.
That's on top of possibly a contested here case hearing and.
If you're talking that, that's a different story, a different question.
Well, I'm talking, I mean, I'm looking at our process modeling basically what the port had to go through. They went through the whole process and they had a contested, you know, they had, they had, you know, groups that protested. And, you know, so I would imagine we were going to go through something similar.
Right.
So I would look at their timeline and kind of transpose it onto us. So even if you had sixty to ninety days on top of that whole process, what are we looking at? Worst-case scenario?
The worst-case scenario on the extended timeline due to all the reviews that are subject, that are available to the community? Murphy, do you have that? I mean, yeah, the thirty to sixty day was just, I was referencing just the additional EPA review. But a contested case hearing, the law judges.
Maybe, it probably is more of a mild question on a contested case hearing because that's a legal matter instead of a constructability matter. So obviously, that would, that would add more time to it. And we recently just acquired our intake permits that did not go to contested case. And it looks like they're mostly going to get approved. But so it could be a couple of years. I mean, I mean, you have to think of it in those ways.
Didn't we also have an additional civil rights complaint against us as well?
We do, yeah.
Yeah, there is a complaint.
Yeah, that's why, Councilman, we are, we are pursuing other water options for the community. Murphy spoke to them earlier.
So with that in mind, could you brief us on those additional ones at a later time, maybe the next one?
Yeah, we can.
Because, I mean, we're, this is going to be a long process. And, you know, we're still in a drought.
We agree.
We need, we need to look for alternative sources. That's, that's about all, I mean.
Yeah, we'll bring back to council, the Evangeline water source is something we've been working pretty diligently on. There will be some action that council, that we're going to recommend council take to help us pursue that business model. And so that'll come to council probably in the next thirty days.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Talon, we're still looking at Talon?
And Talon too, right. We're looking at, you know, we have the two council preferred locations, the Inner Harbor and the La Quinta Channel. But we've also had a proposition from and have entertained the business proposition from Talon Energy to use their plant on the Flower Bluff side, their energy plant, as a potential seawater desalinization intake discharge production site. And so we have a consultant reviewing the business aspects of that. In that case, we would lease land from the utility owner. But they had told us in our pre-meetings that there would be a lower rate for electricity because the power plant's right there. And it would be guaranteed production for them where they'd have a reliable customer. Right now, they kind of run that plant up and down depending on, in terms of energy production, depending on the load need. So that's a potential. The other benefit of that site is the permit process may be less. In other words, it would take less time. But our consultants reviewing all those business proposals, that should be, how far before that's?
By the end of February, we should have that done.
February?
But we are going to have a deliverable, I think, in the next few weeks.
Great, so we'll share that with council as well.
Okay, great.
In that contract, Councilman Pasley and I talked about it. That was a less than fifty thousand dollar contract. We didn't take it to city council, but we did talk about it with the council.
Sure.
So.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Campos?
Thank you, thank you very much. It is, it is significant that the letter that was sent over to the port commissioner, that the federal EPA has made a ruling that it is, what was the word, a draw? Or, in other words, it's back to square one, I mean, for the.
Oh, a draft.
A draft, rather.
Yeah.
Thank you. And again, to Councilman Hernandez's point about seeking other alternatives, that's, that's something that. that's, that's something that, that the whole city, uh, has been, I think, um, looking out for. Um, I think it was, it, it sent the message of all of us putting all our eggs in the basket for desalination to me was in the wrong direction. And I think that we seriously do need to look at all these alternatives, including conservation, including, you know, making sure, I know I, I heard you, uh, city manager, that next week, hopefully, we will be hearing, uh, what the heavy users will be doing as far as conserving because as far as I know, um, you know, all these years that I've, I've been listening, I've really have never heard what their conservation plans are, um, these heavy industry users. So I really am looking forward to that. And it is, uh, we know that the Cho Canyon does lose at least fifty-one percent of evaporation. And, uh, I'm hoping that, that I, I think, again, I, we brought this up in our orientation that there is, uh, alternatives. And I hope that we really get serious about this. This is, um, this is too important. So I, I look forward to, you know, to next week's report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I just, for the record, so, uh, three years ago, as Councilman Hernandez referenced, uh, we, we, the council worked with and the staff worked with facts at the time. At that time, if we go back and look at the record, the, the alternative sources of water were extremely, extremely expensive. They weren't, it wasn't even.
Not any worse than, uh, not any worse than the, uh, desalination.
No, it was, it was, it was extremely more expensive. So in, since though, in the past three years, Evangeline has, has developed a better business model and has brought on newer, more experienced consultants, which is, which has dropped the price of that water, uh, to where it's, it's reasonable for the rate payer to consider. Uh, but we, we, the council and the staff used information at the time and, and we didn't just say, all we're going to do is desal, because we've still, in the, in the four years I've been here, almost every quarter, we're talking to the Evangeline people and other persons too that want to sell us water from West Texas. Uh, and we haven't stopped on the groundwater storage and recovery, although that water source won't really net too, too much, but still, what we have to do as a city is have numerous sources. Nobody here has said, all we're going to focus on is desal. A place like San Antonio, Texas has, I think, sixteen different water sources, sixteen or eighteen, if I'm not mistaken. We only have two. So the west side and the, and the east side of the state, four in total, uh, but two main sources, water says that's not enough for the community. So we're focused on not just seawater desalinization, but others. That's why in about thirty days, we'll be back to you to talk, uh, more specifics about Evangeline. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Klein?
Yeah, thank you. Um, just to kind of build on, on, uh, Councilwoman Campos's comments, I think we do need to look at other, other sources. I haven't heard this talked about yet. Uh, some of the cities out in California are doing this, and that is rainwater capture on a massive scale. Uh, and, and we do have a problem here with flooding, uh, because, you know, that's just the nature of the weather patterns, at least for the last couple of decades anyway, that it doesn't rain, it doesn't rain, it doesn't rain, it doesn't rain, and then you get way too much rain. We have flooding in the different parts of the city. Uh, I think we should be looking at that as well. I think you're, you're right, that, that we need to look at a number of variety of different options. I don't know if there's going to be one solution to this, but rather, uh, a, a recipe of different actions to take, try to, um, uh, uh, ensure, uh, the water supply for the population here in Corpus Christi in particular. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
That concludes the city manager's report, Mayor, for today.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you. So let's go ahead and go into our, um, item number three, which is appointing, um, is that, no, wait.
Item number four, Mayor?
Yes. Where's your four?
Four, cap.
Mm-hmm. I don't have a, or yes, I do. Okay. Yes, we just did three. Okay.
Yes. Ready, Mayor? Okay. So, Mayor and Council, the first board for your consideration is the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee. So each council member and the mayor nominate a member for this committee, and the city manager nominates the remaining six members. Today, there are ten vacancies that we're going to look at. Staff is recommending the postponement of two of those vacancies for further recruitment. So we'll be looking at eight today, to fill today. Seven members nominated by the mayor and the council and one nominated by the city manager.
Motion to approve those nominated.
Thank you. Yeah, the, for the record, the slate of nominees, Haley Gonzalez, Rudy Garza, Trey Summer, Spart Brusleton, Eli McKay, J.J. Hart, Chad Skrabarchip, and Jonathan Gonzalez. Thank you. And who's seconded?
Michael.
Michael. Okay. So Mr. Pusley.
I do. Who's seconded?
Excellent.
Wow. You're going down.
Okay, so I'll, I'll, did y'all vote?
Oh, no, all, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have the Crime Control and Prevention District. So there are nine vacancies on this board, and of course, each council member appoints a board member subject to confirmation by the full council. So of these nine nominees, two nominees are seeking reinstatement because they've exceeded the number of absences required by ordinance. So for now, if we can just vote on the members who, um, instead of, uh, working with the absences, if we can just vote on the remaining nominees, thank you. Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Okay, so it's David Gonzalez, Andrew Leighton, Suzie Saldana, Mariah Boone, Joseph Kramer, Tracy Teague, and Isabel Ariza. So the two remaining nominees are, uh, seeking reinstatement are Marshall Tong and Sandy Fernandez. Uh, they've, they gave some reasons due to illness and being out of town, that's why they missed, but they are interested in seeking reinstatement, and they've spoken to their council members about that. And, uh, council members Hunter and council member Pusley are the two affected. So you gentlemen are okay with reinstatement, correct?
I follow.
Okay, very good. So if the, we can entertain a motion to reinstate those, uh, Ms. Fernandez and Mr. Tong. That would be in order.
So move, we have a, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
Terrific. So next we have the Marina Board. There are four vacancies. Richard Bell, Don Dunlap, Robert Kelly, and Alyssa Barrera Mason are seeking reappointment, and their attendance rates are in your, um.
Packet.
In your packets.
Okay.
Does anyone have issues with, uh, reappointing those people?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries.
All right, very good. Last but not least, the Watershore and Beach Advisory Committee. So there are four vacancies. They represent the following preferred but not required categories. One scientist, one hotel condo owner, and two at large. So first we, they are, to call to your attention, Scott Lawson and Larissa Ford are seeking reappointment, and their packet, their attendance rates are in your packet. They're issue with reappointing them?
Move to reappoint.
What, um, what slots, it's okay, what slots do they fill?
They're at-large members.
Oh, at-large, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have a motion.
Motion by Mr. Councilmember Klein.
Do it, no, no, by, by it.
Seven.
I heard, I heard Mr. Right. Oh, was it him first? I'm sorry, my mistake.
Okay.
Guys got good ears, yeah.
Hunter.
I can be.
No, no. You seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. You're fine.
Okay. So now we have, uh, two vacancies. You do have, um, nominations to cons, uh, the, it's in order to make nominations at this point, and you do have resumes to consider. Again, uh, it's preferred but not required category, so you don't have to fill a particular category.
Okay. Does anyone have any nominations for the vacancy?
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Armin Alex.
Armin Alex?
Second.
And that's for, um, one second.
Okay, and it's for scientist?
Scientist.
Yes, okay.
Okay, anyone else? Watershore and Beach Advisory Committee, we, yes.
Okay, Mr. Pus, no, he's already, yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Robert Garza.
Robert Garza.
I, I'm sorry, I'd also like to nominate David Zill.
David.
Can I do two?
Can he do two?
I'll, I'll nominate David Zill.
So two for Zill. Okay.
Okay, no, I'm good. Okay. Okay. David Zill, okay, so we have three?
Yep, so Zill and Garza are at-large, I guess, and, right, you indicated that Mr. Armin would be the scientist, is that correct? So you want to vote on the scientist one, and then we'll do, um, since we only have one slot, we can do a runoff for the other two, to see who gets appointed to that. So is there?
If we now, or any four, would he be, oh, let's see, and then one?
Well, we're doing at-large. Like if you, well, you don't have, personally.
The scientist, we have.
Yeah, you're right.
For scientists, we have Holland and Megan Jones also in a, and Larissa Ford, but she's filling another category right now. So it's, uh, Megan Jones, Armin Alex, and those are the two, right? But we, there's no nomination for Jones right now, it's just Armin Alex.
Then I want to nominate.
Okay.
For, for scientist.
Point of, point of, uh, information, the, the, one of the positions is for a hotelier position that I, I might, I missed that on my initial, um, look at, are any of the, I, I couldn't.
So they're preferred but not required categories, so if we don't have one.
So it's just a preferred, it's not required to have.
Right.
Okay.
But someone, I think Mr. Barrera in his nomination had indicated Armin Alex would be a scientist, but now Mr. Pusley is saying, uh.
Jones.
He wants to recommend Jones. So that would be a runoff between Jones and Alex for the scientist slot, and then Garza and Zill, is that correct? Are those all the nominees?
Yes.
Okay. So we can start, and that one would be an at-large category between Garza and Zill, right? Let's see.
So let's just vote on the scientist category right now.
Yes, ma'am. All right, let's do that. So which side do you want to start with? Ms. Campos? Ms. Campos, between those two, who would you prefer?
I choose Armin Alex.
Okay. All right. Mr. Hernandez?
Alex.
Okay.
Megan Jones.
Okay.
Mr. Hunter?
Mr. Alex, I wish I would have had the opportunity to speak to you before, and I'm, I apologize about not being able to reach out to you on this. However, Ms. Jones did reach out to me, and I will be voting for her, and I apologize. Thank you.
Alex. Okay.
Alex.
Okay.
Mr. Roy?
Alex.
Okay.
Armin Alex.
Very good.
Alex.
All right, very good. Okay, Mr. Alex is appointed. So now we have a runoff between Garza and Zill. You want to start with Mr. Suckley, or continue with?
I'm sorry, Ms., do you have a question, sir? Do you have a?
I actually have a question about the, just in general, about the scientist category. What deems someone to be a scientist, other than them checking the box that says they're a scientist? I, I'm just asking.
Well, it, it doesn't, but the reason we're doing it this way, and I was going to make a comment on this too, um, is because it says preferred. So if we didn't get a scientist or two who applied, I.
But what's a scientist?
Yeah.
So it's, they, they self-report on the, on the application, so they do list it on the application.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I.
It's, his credentials are in his, um, in his application, so.
Yeah, so, so, but, well.
I mean, if you have a bachelor's in science in some field, does that call you a scientist? I'm, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah.
He has, um, so like I say, these are self-reported positions based on the applica, the, what they put on their application. They say everything is true and correct on their application.
No, I know, but I think what they're saying, Rebecca, is what exactly is, is, does it say?
It says IE marine biologist.
Does it say, I work as a whatever scientist at such and such employment? Like, how do we know outside of what you just said, which is, you could say you're an astronaut, but does that ask them to state where they work?
Yes, they, they submit an application. It, it has their credentials listed, so, um, you know, we're not getting like, um, you know, res, uh, what do you call it? Transcripts or anything like that for, for these positions, but, uh, they do, for the record, include all their information for these items.
Go ahead.
My question is, what do we put as a requirement for that position?
It says marine biologist on here, that's the, um, that's what it requires. So it's a marine biologist, an engineer.
So we need somebody who has a degree in marine biology or marine engineering?
The ord, the code of ordinances doesn't, isn't that specific for the position, so we go on what's in the code of ordinances. And that's what it says. It says IE marine scientist, like a marine biologist, that's what it says. So I can't give you any more specificity than what's in the code. If you'd like us to add more requirements, we can look at that, but.
Well, we might need to, I think that's what it sounds like. There aren't any requirements. You can literally just put that you are a.
I could be a dishwasher at Whataburger and.
And write down.
Yes, but Mr. Alex had, I mean, yeah.
It just seems to me, if you're giving somebody a preferred status, because that's what we're asking, you're, it's preferred that you have that.
Yes.
We're elevating them in their consideration of being on this, so there ought to be some sort of vetting to, to be done in terms of qualification.
Well, we, like I said, they submit their application in the, uh, their application and their resume, all that information in the packet. So it's, it's out there for, uh, for vetting purposes. I mean, we don't.
No, but, but you don't bet.
No.
Okay, so that's what you're saying.
Not for, we do for other things, like a, a voter registration, things like that, but not for an advisory committee.
Ms. Resley?
Yeah, I, I think your, your, your question that y'all kept asking was, was a reference to the city code, city code two dash eighty B. A scientist is preferred but not required, so there would, the vetting at the city staff with level would be not appropriate. So she's, Rebecca's doing exactly the right thing, what city council has requested.
Says preferred.
Yes.
So he, I mean, it's preferred, it's not required, so you don't have to be one.
Okay, so if you check the box, you're a scientist.
I don't know that you would check the box because it's.
Well, I mean, I, they're, like I say, they're, they're listing what.
I get it, well.
They're saying everything's true and correct, and if you turn in a resume that doesn't line up with what you're saying, then it's on the individual, and I, I wouldn't, you Well, I mean, I, they're, like I say, they're, they're listing what, they're saying everything's true and correct. And if you turn in a resume that doesn't line up with what you're saying, then it's on the individual. And I, I wouldn't, you know, appoint them as a council.
It's kind of like saying you're a veteran. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Or an engineer.
Yeah, they're just volun, this is for the advisory, marine advisory committee.
Volunteer.
Again, I understand and I appreciate someone standing up to serve. But if we're giving them a, it's our preference to have that category. If someone checks the box, that's, gives them a preference.
Well, we can make them all at large. I mean.
Well, I think what we need to do is move on, and Rebecca, I think we need to get some.
Definitely.
You, you need to let us know, here is my recommendation, and we could do that another, you know, by email or what have you, based on what you just heard, recommendation on how we can bring this in a little bit.
Well, we have to amend the code to include more.
Right.
More requirements because we can't, we, we certainly can't define it. So we're going to go with what's in the code of ordinances, and we can do that.
Right.
In other words, we're going to believe what they, what they write down, right? We're going to believe what they check.
We don't, yeah, I don't have it investigated, but anyway, we can talk about it later, so.
Councilman Pussley, did you have something?
I'll continue the discussion.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm right with you, Mayor. We, and, and Councilman Suckley's comments. If this board, if the previous councils who created this board, and I've never been exactly sure what this board does, because I never hear any reports from them. But we need to, if, if we have decided that a scientist, marine biologist, environmentalist needs to serve on this board, then we need to have a code that says they will have either an experience level and/or.
Yes, sir.
A degreed from some recognized university in that field.
Yes, sir. It would need to be specified in the code. That's right.
So it'd be just like Councilman Klein here is a history professor. If we were, if we were going to say we need a history professor on here, and I checked that box and I signed up, well, my degree in geology doesn't have anything to do with history other than historical geology. So it's just same thing.
Councilman Hunter.
Thank you, and I, I, I agree. I don't think, I think that we, we, we should look at this another time. Councilman Pussley brings up a lot of, a lot of good points, that's for sure, and I do agree with him. However, we also do have a policy in place that.
It's preferred but not required.
We, well, we can't change anything. Until the next time around, so we got to keep what we're going.
Yes, sir.
And, so I'd like to call a question.
Okay, so.
Oh, you did?
We did, so right now.
Then I'd like to second his call to question.
Okay, Mr. Alex, right now, based on the, the voting that we did, he has been appointed as the scientist. Right? Or an at-large member. If you don't want to call him a scientist, you can make him an at-large member. I mean, but, like I said, the nomination was scientist. So now we're going to go with Garza and Zil. And if you like, Mayor, we can start with Councilmember Suckley or return to Ms. Campus. I'm not sure what your preference is.
Yes, Councilman.
Okay.
Zil.
All right.
Zil. Zil. Zil.
Garza.
Mr. Hunter? What did he say?
Garza.
Garza, okay. Okay. Mr. Pesley? All right.
Well, it's already, I'll go with Garza since he's a District Five boy.
All right. And Ms. Campus?
I'm going to go with Garza.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Zil is appointed. Thank you, Council.
For clarity, I'm sorry, you were going to say?
Oh, I just said, Mr. I, Mr. Zil's appointed.
For clarity, you will bring back to us what you recommend.
Yes.
Happen.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on what you're.
Yes, ma'am, I will, and I, I respect the council's position. I'll provide a recommendation on that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see here. So I'm going to do what I typically do. We're going to break for lunch, but I am going to go, excuse me, through the consent agenda and pull what items council members would like to pull. We are pulling item thirteen. This is the city auditor appointment until after lunch, which is when we will speak on, on it in executive session. We'll also, oh, we don't have a number nine. No, it's gone. Okay. Any council member, would any council member like to pull any items, numbers five through fifteen for considerate, per, uh, individual consideration?
Mayor, I'd like to pull seventeen.
Item number seventeen, okay.
Oh, wait a minute, I apologize, that's an individual consideration item.
Oh, okay. Okay, then I will go ahead and entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item number thirteen. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. When we return from lunch, we will go straight to item number thirteen and then move on with the agenda. Congratulations, Armin.
Need to read the, thank you.
Oh, right, right.
Need to read the language, please.
Yes, yes, the language. Where's the language? Where's the language? Okay. The council will go into executive session on item number twenty per Texas Government Code Sections five-five-one point zero-seven-one and five-five-one point zero-seven-four. We will return.
Okay, we'll go ahead and reconvene, excuse me, reconvene our meeting and go straight to item number thirteen, which is the motion appointing George Holland as city auditor with compensation as follows: annual salary of $130,000, monthly car allowance of $400, standard benefits, and vacation accrual at the rate of an 11-year employee, all contingent upon completion of employment requirements of the City of Corpus Christi.
So moved.
Second.
Well, that was a motion. I was actually reading.
Well, that was exactly what I was gonna read.
Okay, no. Well, I was reading the, um, yes, I was reading the motion and the description. Okay, so, yeah, you can go ahead and make the motion, councilman.
Okay, I'll make the motion appointing George Holland as the city auditor with compensation as follows: annual salary of $130,000, monthly car allowance of $400, standard benefits, and vacation accrual at the rate of an 11-year employee, all contingent upon completion of employment requirements of the City of Corpus Christi.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Okay, so now we will go to item number sixteen, and that is case number 1022-05 Cypress Point Capital LLC located in District Five.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Nina Nixon-Mendas, Assistant Director of Development Services. This is a rezoning from the FR to the RS-222 district. The applicant is Cypress Point Capital LLC, and the property is located at Farm to Market 2444 and County Road 43. The property is not platted, and it is eighteen acres in size. The property was annexed into the city on December twentieth of 2022, and the property and adjacent properties will be served by a twelve-inch water line along County Road 43 and Farm to Market Road 2444. The council approved a reimbursement for the construction of the twelve-inch water line. The twenty-eight lots will be one-half acres or greater, and those lots will be served by septic tanks. The purpose of the request, again, is to allow for single-family residential subdivision with half-acre lots or greater, and the subject property is part of the London Area Development Plan. The future land use map designates this area's medium-density residential use. Current adjacent land uses to the north, south, and east are vacant and undeveloped. To the west is the city's Staples Street pumping plant. Public notification: three notices were sent inside the 200-foot buffer, and three notices were mailed outside. Zero notices were received in opposition. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the future land use map, and staff recommends approval as well as planning commission. I stand by for questions.
Thank you, Nina. So I'm gonna go ahead and open a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on item number sixteen? Okay, is the applicant here, and would he like to say any words?
I don't think so.
No? Okay. We'll close public comment, or public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion to approve. Oh, Mr. Klein. Well, I was gonna entertain a motion to approve, so would someone like to make a motion?
I second.
Sylvia?
I'll second.
Okay, and then you seconded. Okay, great. Any further discussion, Mr. Klein?
So I just wanted clarification. So I just wanted clarification on this. I looked at the map here. I should've checked this before, I didn't. This new property is gonna be, is it contingent attached to the rest of the city property? Is that correct? It's not all by itself?
That is correct. We did annex the Farm to Market Road twenty, twenty-two, as well as the county roads adjacent to it.
The reason I ask is, I drove out there a couple of times in the first month of, first part of January now, and there were two, three, four fireworks stands still out there yet. And so I wasn't sure. I assumed that those fireworks stands were in operation on New Year's Eve. I wasn't out there on New Year's Eve, but I assumed that they probably were in operation. They are also within city limits now as well? Is that correct?
It's just the right-of-way of the county roads and, and the textile right-of-way. So it's just the right-of-way that was annexed.
Yeah, but Nina, can you put up the map? Because there is a square block that's in the city limits.
So the property itself is indicated in the hatched area. You're saying there's a fireworks stand there?
Yeah, Nina, there was a better map, like the prior one, the prior page. It shows the old city limits, and then the, keep going.
I think the fireworks stands were along 2444.
Okay.
South Staples.
Yeah, if it was past that County Road 43, councilman, trying to draw that line. There was one on the map, Nina, maybe the first one. There we go. So see that dotted line, councilman? That's the new city limits in that box. So those are the two roads that we annex, so it brings all that territory in, in that dotted box area. And the subject property is surrounded by that, well, it's inside that red box.
Right, right. So indeed, the new annexed territory really only is connected to the rest of the city by Farm to Market 2444.
That, as well as County Road 43 and County Road 18.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Yes. But good point. We'll make sure the, because it's annexed in the city now, so it needs to be compliant with city regulations. So if there's a fireworks stand in any of that boxed area, it would be illegal. So we'll make sure the teams are out there, making sure that's not the case.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no.
We have a motion second on the floor, Mayor.
Right, we're taking the vote.
Oh, okay.
Right, right. Any opposed, say no?
Oh, sorry.
Okay, the motion carries. No problem. Item number seventeen is an ordinance amending Chapter fourteen of the Corpus Christi Code to adopt with local amendments the International Code Council's 2021 additions of the International Building Code, International Existing Building Code, International Fuel/Gas Code, International Mechanical Code, International Plumbing Code, International Residential Code, and International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, amending Chapter fourteen of the Corpus Christi Code to adopt with local amendments the National Fire Prevention Association's 2020 edition of the National Electrical Code. Wow.
And with that, I close.
Yeah, thank you.
I am not Al Raymond, Michael Dice, Development Services. We are here today to present the updates to the building code, to the 2021 International Code Council with Local Amendments. I'm gonna present a brief overview of the code process, background of the advisory board that coordinates with DSD, highlights from the individual codes, our timeline for review and effective date, our recommendation, and then we can answer any questions you may have regarding the process. Little background, Councilman Klein may appreciate this history lesson. The first known written building code was enacted by King Hammurabi in Babylon in 1758 B.C., so building codes are not new. That code actually stated if a builder builds a house for someone and does not construct it properly, and the house which he built falls and kills its owner, then that builder shall be put to death. I assure you, our code is not that strict. The International Code Council, ICC, adopts their codes on a three-year cycle. We'll be looking at nine of their building codes today, including the fire code. Since 1929, the City of Corpus has maintained a building code and provided regulations that specifies the minimum standards for design, construction, quality of materials, use and occupancy, safety and maintenance of various types of buildings to protect life, health, property, and public welfare. The City of Corpus Christi adopted the first national standard code with the adoption of the 1954 Southern Building Code, and has continued to update local codes with national and international organizations. So adopted every six years, the city adopts every six years a national code to consider the latest construction methods and the national safety codes. City of Corpus is currently utilizing the International Code 2015 addition with local amendments. The city continues adopting updated construction codes on a six-year cycle to minimize the challenges to citizens and staff associated with code updates. Updated codes also help influence our ISO score. I know we have some insurance people on council. Rated by the Insurance Service Office, an independent organization, lower ISO scores can reduce insurance rates for municipality based on new structures being at a lower risk of serious fire structural damage. Finally, this will also conform to the White House request from June of '22 that requires cities to update to the most current IBC and IRC codes as to not jeopardize FEMA or CWBG funding. Our reviewing process started in March of '21 with a large amount of stakeholder involvement. We had twenty-one technical review committee meetings over all the codes, and over fifty public discussions, including presentations in each council district, planning commission, and construction trade advisory appeals board. So CTAB, as we call it, the Construction Trade Advisory Appeals Board, is nine members appointed by city council. These are not city employees. They are qualified in building-related and fire codes, at-large positions for three years. The Construction Trade Advisory Appeals Board, or CTAB, advises the city manager regarding any matter related to construction that it considers should be brought to the attention of city council. CTAB also obtains public comment for any adoption of the codes, which is what we're doing here. And finally, they assisted in the 2021 code development adoption process discussed in ten CTAB meetings over the last two years, in addition to their twenty-one technical meetings. Just to highlight our members, each position has a general requirement, much like was talked about earlier on another board. Our general contractor is Gary Camp. He's our chair. He works with Victory Building Team. Our engineer architect is Jared Murdes. He's with Striddle, I'm sorry, Stride, Callens and Associates. I apologize if I butcher anything.
Striddy.
Striddy, even better. Our HVAC contractor is Mike Wonzier of Mike Wonzier AC. HVAC technician is Chad Rolston with McNatt Air Conditioning. I believe that's how it's spelled there. Apologize. Master electrician is Paul Cervantes with Cervantes Electric. Our Texas professional land surveyor is Ronald Brister of Brister Surveying. Electrical contractor Jose Jimenez with Jimenez Electric. Master plumber Mike Dildy with Maverick Plumbing. And we have a vacant spot on the plumbing contractor portion, so if there are any plumbers watching on YouTube, please contact Rebecca, just in case. Got to throw it out there. Again, while several other cities in the state have already adopted the twenty-one codes, we were methodical that the nine codes listed here, building, existing building, residential, fire, mechanical, plumbing, fuel/gas, swimming pool, and electric, all approximately of 2,500 pages were reviewed in depth over the last two years with stakeholders, and I'll discuss some brief highlights of, in the next slides. One code which is shown on this slide in green, which we are not hearing today, is the twenty-one energy code, which we plan on bringing that back at a future date. The reason is, the state adopts the code through the Texas Comptroller's Office, and during this legislature, they may consider it. So we're planning on bringing it back after the state does a consideration, or not. Either way, we'll have an energy code in '23. So briefly, some highlights. The IBC, or the International Building Code, we've got some definitions and regulations for puzzle rooms or escape rooms. These are a new entertainment aspect where you get locked in a room and you have to figure your way out. Unfortunately, that makes it hard for means of egress in the case of an emergency, so the IBC actually is addressing that now. Shipping containers, which is used a lot for reuse, adaptive reuse. Island Joe's out on the island is a prime example, where before it wasn't addressed, and we had to figure out how to get it into that box. The code now addresses it. Heavy timber, it's actually making a comeback. As you see in this picture here, large timber use went away for a number of years. It's now coming back to be used in design and construction, and the code now addresses it. Rooftop assemblies, saw some council members at a meeting the other day, those types of assemblies were never fully addressed within the code. It now is with the twenty-one. Electrical code, again, the 2020 NFPA, it's separate from the ICC, but it is adopted on the same cycle. This improves electrical safety for emergency responders, primarily emergency shut-offs for solar installations. We don't want to have fire emergency responders on a rooftop that's energized. Flexibility on location and spacing, we had some issues on where outlets and boxes need to be done. We worked that out with the local stakeholders to make sure that we have an adequate code either. At one point, we had plugs that would be behind doors or under things based on their spacing. We wanted to make it reasonable. We're adding arc fault protection areas, like to guest rooms, and surge protection for one- and two-family residents. Twenty-twenty-one IPC, we have an added allowance for multiple-user facilities. We have an amendment coming up that we will make at the DIAS on that due to some conversation we had this week. We add an alternate for rainwater harvesting, as was talked about earlier with the drought. We want to- We want to provide every option we can to citizens to be able to collect rainwater. Swimming pool code, we actually just adopted this in 2019, the 2018, but we're going to go ahead and adopt the 21. Some minor changes that adds clarity for, designed for splash pads and logical, you would think that if you dig a hole in the ground to build a pool, it would require a fence. Well, the code actually did not. So now it does require a fence from excavation until the pool being permanent. Fire code, 2021 fire code, there are some added sprinkler requirements to certain types of existing assemblies, specifically a high-rise residential as well. We're finding the requirements for energy storage systems. These are large battery systems. You'll see a picture here on the bottom of the screen. These systems are coming about to supplement the grid. We have a number, actually two or three, that are in discussion right now to be installed in Corpus. The new fire code actually addresses how these will be handled with fire suppression systems. And again, in general, just expands provisions for construction fire safety. There's some added items for egress doors and things of that nature. Batteries are good. It helps. And again, we want to be in the forefront and make sure that those, that's what the whole reason for the, the code is to give those options.
And you got Tesla coming, so.
Different type of battery, but yeah.
You never know what other battery opportunities you'll get.
That's true. So briefly, the timeline, we started in March of '21. We're almost at two years of these discussions. Large stakeholder engagement, committee presentations, community meetings we did in each district. We're here today to propose the amendments for city council consideration or approval. And what's different from other cities that Corpus is doing is we are allowing, or we are recommending a sixth month effective date. Other cities are 30, 60, or 90 days. We want to make sure that the citizens, the local stakeholders, anybody that's got stuff in process has six months to wrap their things up. It provides us an amount of time to train the local community, train our staff. And again, it gives, we do this every six years, so it's, we want to make sure everything's right. So we're going to put an effective date of six months out. So finally, staff recommends an approval of the 2021 codes and 2020 electrical code with local amendments. Again, I'd like to reiterate that our code is a locally amended living ordinance and may need to be updated. As I mentioned today, we'll have a quick update on the dais for one plumbing item. And new means and methods are proposed at the best interests of the citizens and stakeholders to address. I want to give a quick shout out to staff. Grace, Gina, and Kat, who's now at Parks, for all the meetings they set up, my senior inspectors, we have Bill here for leading all of their technical meetings, and other staff for their help. We have fire here, former Chief Rocha was involved, interim Chief Quintero, Chief Page, Captain Lewis, our CTAB board members, which we have here today as well, AIA, AGC, and other stakeholders. And finally, we got good words from the CBHBA during public comment. We had a great partnership within throughout the entire process. And for that, I'm open to questions.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm assuming the amendment is in plumbing?
I'm sorry?
I'm assuming your amendment is going to be in plumbing?
Yes, it is.
Because I noticed on page, I guess, eight of your, that it says adds allowance for multi-user toilet facilities to serve as credit.
Correct.
Is that the one we're talking about here?
Yes.
Okay.
So this amendment, the code, in, in the past, codes did not allow for family bathrooms to count for fixture counts. Fixer counts in Table 403 require, based on your occupant load and size, that you have a certain amount of counts, male, female. Family occupancies, where you see, if you've ever been to the emergency room at Shoreline South, unfortunately, I've been there, they have a family restroom in the lobby. That's the types of things that it's addressing. There is one item, though, that furthers that to what's called a, and you can kind of see it on the bottom right, it's a multi-user facility. They're not really used in small buildings, restaurants, anything like that. These are in larger-type facilities like stadiums, things of that nature. But again, that's the amendment that we have to pose today is to delete that portion.
Okay, because I mean, that, that could be a problem, right?
It could be, but again, we, we have no problem in deleting that portion.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Pasley.
So I assume by the comments that were made earlier this morning, that y'all have met with the Builders Association here locally, and they're okay with what we're doing here?
Two years of exhaustive meetings with the Builders Association. I, I would say that they are happy with what we've done, happy with the engagement we've I can only let their comments earlier speak for itself.
They're not here, so I guess that, that says a lot. Thank you for doing that.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
I want to thank each of you for, who participated in that, for taking the time to do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Now, again, our presentation did cover item number 18, so I wasn't sure if that's an item you want to do together or just do them separately?
No, we can do them together. Absolutely. Let me, let me, let me open, I've got, yes, we do, but I'm going to open the public comment. So is anyone in the public who would like to make comment on item number 17 or 18? And we'll read 18 in just a second. Okay, there being no one, I'll close public comment. And I'm going to go ahead and read item number 18, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 18 of the Corpus Christi Code to adopt the local amendments, the International Code Council's 2021 additions of the International Fire Code. So I'll entertain a motion to approve. Item number 17 and 18 is read.
Second.
Okay, do we have further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The motion carries. Thank you.
Now look all these books back.
Yes. I have to ask for those, were you going to? Hold, hold on, hold on. I want to know what the books are.
These are all the different codes.
So you were going to reference those if need be?
If need be.
Thank you for coming prepared. Wow. In books, yes.
Mayor Point of, in court, you said there was going to be an amendment?
Yeah.
Did that amendment take, was that part of this motion, or did? My question is, what amendment was it?
So the amendment is to delete 403.2.6 of the plumbing code. And when we bring that back on the 31st, that amendment will be, that'll be stricken out of the code.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, so that'll be on the second reading?
Second reading, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilman Pasley, did you have a comment? Yes, of course. Oh, no, I thought you were talking a minute ago. Okay, Councilman Hernandez.
Just for the record, I've seen those multi-use facilities all over the world, and they work just great. If there is anything that y'all need, I mean, maybe we're not a large enough city for them, but they are very efficient in other places. But of course, I can understand why, being in a drought conservation state that we are, it might not be a good idea to have one. But just letting you know, I wouldn't drop it fully, maybe look at it.
The code is a living document.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to Section M, briefings. Item number 19 is the Hunden Strategic Partners' Presentation on the Results of the Feasibility Study for Options Regarding Renovation/Expansion of the American Bank Center Convention Center Hotel and Mixed-Use Entertainment District.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Today, we have a presentation by Rob Hunden with Hunden Strategic Partners, and we have David Grisel, who's also here with Convergence Designs, on the results of the facility study for options on potential Convention Center Hotel, Mixed-Use Entertainment District, and a needs assessment for renovation and expansion of the American Bank Center. But before we start the presentation, I would like to give you some background. On May 20th, 1978, the City of Corpus Christi held official dedication of the Bayfront Plaza Auditorium. On May 21st, 1981, the official dedication of the Bayfront Plaza Convention Center. And then further in 2004, renovations to the Convention Center were done, as well as the now Salina Auditorium, and the addition of the arena. In 2021, during the fiscal year 2022, and I'm sorry. During the budget process, sorry, I think I'm missing a page here. Oh, here we go. During the budget process, the city manager informed the city council that the subsidy for the American Bank Center is approximately three to one. In that same year, the ongoing reviews by BISAC Corpus Christi found that the city had approximately lost 3, 36,000 room nights with an economic impact of over $14 million to the community due to the current facility constraints at the American Bank Center, as well as no connected hotel. The former chairman of BISAC Corpus Christi, Johnny Filippello, led a task force with hotel leaders BISAC Corpus Christi, the city and stakeholders, to address such concerns.
Mayor? I want to make something really clear here, because I'm very concerned about the statement that the city lost $14 million. I want to be, just to be very clear, that that wasn't $14 million of tax money that we lost, that that was just an estimated economic development. Because the way that's worded, someone might assume that the city somehow lost $14 million of taxpayer money. I want to make sure we.
But yeah, there's a loss to the economy for that.
Okay.
Thank you. As a result, a national search was conducted for professional services. The task force reviewed proposals and recommended Hunden Partners. On March 29, 2002, the city council approved the contract with Hunden Strategic Partners to conduct a hotel feasibility study and a needs assessment of the American Bank Center. In June 14, 2022, the city council approved the amend, the contract to extend the scope for a mixed-use entertainment district with the facility study of all city-owned properties surrounding the American Bank Center. On December 2nd, 2002, the city manager approved to amend the contract to include the work of finance. So just to recap, some of the steps moving forward, where we're at right now is step one. The feasibility study has been completed as of today and will be presented by Hunden Strategic Partners. Step two, we need to develop a plan of finance and financial modeling to review around May timeframe of this year. And step three, after review of the plan of finance, the city staff will bring back to city council a potential recommendation. Today, there is no recommendation by city staff at this time and no action items today. Now I will turn it over to Rob Hunden to present the feasibility study.
Great, thank you, Elsie.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Elsie. And hopefully, I won't screw this up, so if I do this, perfect, great. Hello, everyone, and thanks for allowing me to be here today. I'm joined by David Grisel from Convergence Design, who has done some initial drawings that you'll see of what we went into. So I've had the pleasure of briefing most of you individually over the last couple of months, and so, so hopefully, that provided some additional context. This was an over 300-page study that has a lot of depth to it, a lot of research, and so what we're going to talk about today are sort of the highlights, excuse me, of the, of the study. So first, just a little bit about Hunden Strategic Partners, just for many of you who weren't around when we were hired, this is the kind of thing that we do all the time. We like to say Hunden Strategic Partners, HSP stands for Host Stay and Play, because we do nerdy work for cool places. We focus on transformative developments that are at the intersection of real estate development, economic development, and tourism development. And we often see that these kinds of developments help uplift communities and make them places that people not only want to visit, but live, work, and play once they have visited. So we see that there's a, a strong correlation between a place that presents well to visitors that then can be a place people consider moving their company to or, or coming to as an employer, as a family member. We focus on convention and event centers, sports and recreation complexes, mixed-use projects, entertainment districts, hotels, retail, restaurant, entertainment districts, and attractions. And so all of those things are part and parcel of what we're talking about today. And I've been doing this for about 30 years now, a little less, 28, I suppose. And I started off at the City of Indianapolis, the, the city and, and the bond bank that funded the, the projects there. And most of the places that we work have a lot in common with a Corpus Christi or an Indianapolis. Most places aren't Vegas, or New York, or even Nashville, or Austin. They are places that have some warts, maybe lack a little bit of sex appeal, but there's enough there there that there, it's worth investing in, in ourselves and our communities to make the best of who we are and who we want to be in the future. And so I have done that over 1,000 times in, you know, 48 different states and several countries, where we look to see how can, how can we help a community improve itself by reinvesting in, and so we're not, we're no cheerlead for, you know, spending money on projects, but we do is find out what's the opportunity in the market and what are the costs and benefits of getting there. So that's what, that's what we look at. So for me, it's sort of transformative placemaking is what we're all about, and we've seen these success stories, and we've also seen a lot of places just sit and do nothing for decades. And so, you know, you get to choose who you want to be. But, but that's the kind of space that we live in all the time, and, and we do these kinds of studies about 60 times a year. So every week, I'm in another place like this, trying to help them out. In terms of what the, what the study covered, we really looked at items one through five. So one through five include that, you know, what are we talking about here? It's the American Bank Center, it's Convention Center Headquarters Hotel, it's, is there anything to do there? Is there a district? Is there anything walkable? Currently not, so we want to look at that. So that was the concept of all the things we looked at. So we did the market analysis for all of those things. We did the site analysis, and then based on that, we made recommendations, and then we went into our demand and financial feasibility analysis, and then the sort of the ROI analysis for the public sector is the economic and fiscal impact analysis. So we did that. Now we're at the end of that item number five, and so now we look to, okay, A, is this something that people want to get excited about, get behind, reinvest in the community? What choices do you want to make? So we're sort of at that point between five and six, where, you know, do we move forward and look at funding opportunities and sources to, to make something like this work, or don't we? And then if so, okay, we got to make a game plan for that. And then following that, we would go out for developer solicitation and selection to attract qualified developers with private capital to help bring this vision to life. So let's just go back to why the heck is the American Bank Center important? So one of the things that we have at our disposal at Hunden, since 2017 now, we have data going back to, is we use this, what's called geofencing data, cell phone tracking data. And so if you've gone through our 300-plus-page report, you've seen tons of cool maps with lots of colored dots on them and statistics showing that we can track where people come from, not you individually, but people sort of in general. And so we know that actually the American Bank Center is the most visited attraction in Corpus Christi. The only way you could say that it wouldn't, wasn't, is if you added up all the beaches together and they would be more visited than the American Bank Center. But it's actually pretty impressive that something that has got a lot of deferred maintenance and a lot of problems and challenges is still the most visited single attraction in the City of Corpus Christi. So in 2019, which was sort of our last prior full legit year before the pandemic, over 900,000 visits and, and those came, those visitors came on average twice per year, so about 450,000 individual customers. And when we look at, so this is one of those examples. Now, this, this data here is from our 20, yeah, this is the 2019 stats. So you can see here that, you know, within 100 miles, you had about 70%, or, excuse me, two-thirds were within 100 miles, and then the rest were beyond 100, 100 miles, and even about 5% were beyond 500 miles. So it's, it's not just, it's not just locals going to concerts and things like that. You've got a lot of people that are coming here for different kinds of events, but you're punching below your weight, weight class. There's a lot more that you could be doing. There, there's a real challenge here. There's a lot lost business happening. And, and I know Brett from the CDB is here today, and he, he can sort of talk about the lost business, which we detail in our report. But what we looked at was what is it going to take to optimize this facility? That does get a lot of operating support because it does operate at a fiscal deficit every year and is not as impactful as it needs to be. So it's impactful enough to care about, but not as impactful as it could be to be something that really is robust. And so when we compare the American Bank Center, which we really looked at the convention And so when we compare the American Bank Center, which we really looked at the convention center itself, we know that there is a deficit of, um, mostly bought, like, high-quality ballroom and breakout meeting spaces. Um, and when we compare with the rest of what's in Texas, and these are even older stats, when you add in what Dallas is doing and what Fort Worth is doing, uh, these stats would be even worse for Corpus Christi. So there's a deficit there, uh, not only in the types of function spaces that are the most compelling, but we also have zero connected hotel rooms, zero walkable hotels, zero walkable hotel rooms, and zero hotel rooms per thousand square feet of exhibit space, right? Because we're just out of reach. Um, your major competitors' walkable districts, uh, you have two restaurants and a bar, um, so for a total of three, and walkable to the average of your competitors, um, are thirty-five of those things, and, and the average of the top five is, is double that. So there's a huge deficit of walkability and enjoyability and really destination appeal other than your beaches for someone to make the trek to Corpus Christi. And you have airlift and other, you know, accessibility challenges that aren't in your favor either, so you need the things that you can fix to be fixed in order to be competitive. Um, so the challenges for the convention center are you have deteriorated facilities, uh, the, the figure fifty to sixty million in deferred maintenance is, is out there. I mean, it's a huge number. Um, the exhibit hall is outmoded, the L-shaped ballroom upstairs is, um, very outmoded and, and obsolete in how it's utilized, the HVAC noise is terrible. There, you have very few meeting rooms, uh, which are not sufficient to attract the higher-rated business you want. Um, so as I mentioned, you've got that, your largest ballroom is outmoded, too small and shaped like an L. Um, and so all of your competitors have much better quality of all of these elements at the center. Um, the arena and salina, um, they have some deferred maintenance, they have some issues that need to be addressed. Those can be addressed without redoing those buildings entirely, that those are more, um, things that can be invested in during a renovation. Um, but when we go to the hotel package, um, as I mentioned, it's goose eggs across the board, right? So for your competitors, uh, they have an average of a couple thousand rooms they can walk to on average, um, within that easy walking distance of the, the doors of the convention center, and that's just not the case here. And, and even if people are willing to make the walk to the Omni, um, which is farther than the standard walkable distance, um, after that, it's, it's slim, it's fairly slim pickings in terms of, um, optionality for hotels. And so you're just not competitive with your peers, and so, uh, what would be optimal to get to the level of your peers would be between eleven hundred and thirteen hundred and fifty walkable hotel rooms within a package of, say, three or four hotels, including a large headquarters hotel attached, not just adjacent, but attached to the convention center. And then the walkable district, you guys are really in the catbird seat. We don't see a lot of communities that have acres and blocks of vacant, essentially available publicly-owned land right around their convention center. Most have to really shoehorn things around. Um, in Dallas, we're literally like moving the convention center out of the way to create a district. Um, so here you have acres and acres of land available to you that you own that is being underutilized, right? It's just surface parking for the most part. And so you have an opportunity to create a walkable district instead of just this sea of, um, surface parking. Um, and your competitors have these districts. So this map, uh, this aerial with some highlighted colors shows the black boxes essentially are vacant lots and surface parking, so huge opportunity, including then Heritage Park, which is an opportunity. But you see that distance, uh, here on this map, the walkable, and we kind of stretched this, right? This, this distance, uh, that we would consider walkable, we used to say fifteen hundred linear feet, we stretched it to eighteen hundred feet, and we still didn't get to the Omni Hotel. And what Brett from the CVP will tell you is that when they, when you bid against other destinations to host a meeting, you have to actually throw in a bunch more money than these other places to just get to ground zero competitively with them because you have to pay for shuttle service between hotels and the American Bank Center. Those that have attached hotels don't have to do that. So you're at a financial disadvantage in, in any bidding that you do, um, to get that connected hotel. So, so I think this is a really instructive, uh, situation, right? So based on our analysis of all the challenges, but yet the opportunities too, because what do we do? We, we talked to, we did meeting planner surveys, we interviewed tons of meeting planners, we talked to all the folks here, the hoteliers, we did a ton of research, and what we determined that there is a strong demand for a convention center, a well-designed and functioning convention center and hotel package, as well as a walkable district, so people can walk out of, of their meetings and go have food, have drinks, be entertained, be indoors and outdoors. And so we have this real opportunity. Texas is growing, so the state associations are growing. We're not necessarily seeing all that growth here in Corpus Christi, but you can take a bite at that apple if you actually have a convention center that's compelling. So we are recommending an expanded convention center that is also renovated, that would include a new large forty thousand square foot grand ballroom that would make you extremely competitive with the rest of Texas, uh, which is ninety-five percent of your marketplace. Um, an enhanced, uh, exhibit hall, we're not calling for a huge expansion to the exhibit hall, but something that improves it. And then we are, uh, significantly suggesting additions to the number of breakout meeting rooms because that's what gets you what we call high-rated, high-spending business, right? So for the convention hotel, ultimately you want to have like three or four hotels adding up to about thirteen hundred and fifty rooms. It will take a while to get the headquarters hotel built. Um, that, those are supertankers, they typically require about a forty to fifty percent public participation, and Texas has laws and, and legislation that allow for, uh, a lot of, um, state-oriented tools to help make those happen, which we've used in Fort Worth, and many other cities have used those, and you have the ability to use those tools too. But that takes time, and those, that hotel development will not come until your convention center is upgraded. They will not make the investment unless you do. Now, there is an opportunity to potentially do a two to three hundred key select service hotel to at least get the ball rolling in advance of that, um, and so we are eyeballing those two options for the first phase of development along with the convention center expansion and renovation. But there is a strong market there for those things in terms of opportunity in the marketplace. We are also recommending three hundred units of multifamily development, sixty thousand square feet of restaurants, bars, and other entertainment, um, indoor and outdoor entertainment options there, and a little bit of lofted office space. The office market is very tough these days, and so we're not overshooting, um, our, uh, the marketplace by suggesting too much there. And then phases two and three would add to the density specifically more in additional retail and restaurant and residential units, so that you're really creating critical mass here. You can't hodgepodge this, you know, just building one or two things isn't going to work. So what does it look like today? So today, this is the layout, um, of the, um, first and second floors, and you can see that the water garden ballroom there on the right side is that L-shaped ballroom that's really obsolete and doesn't really function well. We had our, a bunch of our kickoff meetings there, and so we got to unfortunately experience it firsthand. Um, here, the Henry Garrett Ballroom is a lovely ballroom, and it does a great job, and it's, you know, sort of well-designed with its pre-function and back-of-house space. Uh, exhibit halls, you can see they have on the left side those notches cut out of them, and that makes them difficult for users. And so we're, we're suggesting making some adjustments to that, and then of course adding those function space rooms, those breakout rooms. So David Greisel, maybe you can come up and talk, take them through not only both levels of the convention center renovation and expansion and the attached hotel, but then show them the district and some of the elements there. And again, this district is a nice placeholder that we feel makes sense, but it is not the end-all, be-all. This is many machinations to come, um, if we're in favor generally of moving forward with this concept. So David, I'll let you take it away.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'm David Greisel with Convergence Design. Uh, we are a design firm that works with Hunton Partners on a lot of these projects, and this is our, uh, concept plan for the redevelopment of, uh, American Bank Center. Um, and it's basically the, the same, uh, orientation of the plans you were just looking at, uh, with some pretty substantial changes. So at the ground level, uh, we're proposing actually moving the exhibit hall a little bit to the west because right now it's got low ceilings on both ends, and this would create a single rectangular volume with a high ceiling all the way across of ninety thousand square feet, which is a little bit bigger than what you have now, but, uh, more importantly, it's more functional, uh, completely wrapped with a, a pre-function band that's that yellow band that goes around on the north side, uh, that would allow it to be divided into different chunks, and, and you could access any of those chunks at any time. Um, so it, it would be much more functional as well as a little bit larger. Uh, some of that existing exhibit hall, uh, on the east side would then be converted to additional meeting space. Uh, Rob mentioned the need for additional breakout meeting space. Uh, you would have in total, uh, about forty-eight thousand square feet of breakout meeting rooms, which is substantially more, uh, than what you have now. And then on the second level, whoops, wrong button. Forward arrow.
Now do it.
There we go. Whoops, I jumped one. On the second floor, uh, this is where the, uh, the big, uh, new grand ballroom is located, and you can see we're actually proposing it, uh, building it elevated on the east side of the building where it would have, the pre-functionary would have spectacular views out to the water, which is obviously your biggest asset. Um, it, you would still have the Henry Garrett Ballroom, which would be an excellent, is an excellent ballroom, but maybe of a more medium-sized ballroom, and the, the new ballroom would be, of course, quite grand. And the existing water garden ballroom would be converted into more meeting space, which, given its height and age, is, is actually more appropriate use for that space. Again, uh, so in summary, you would have ninety thousand square feet of exhibit space, forty-eight thousand square feet of meeting rooms, and fifty-eight thousand square feet of ballrooms in two spaces, uh, giving you a total of a hundred and ninety-five thousand sellable square feet in addition to all the circulation and support space. Um, so a much more competitive convention facility for you. Uh, and, and I didn't mention, but we are also proposing adding a small, uh, a, a new grand lobby on the, uh, southwest corner of the arena to help alleviate, um, uh, arrival and, uh, a ticket, you know, ticket collection functions, uh, for the arena, so there'd be a little bit of additional space for that too. But, uh, perhaps more importantly, all that yellow stuff that you see on this plan is, is circulation that sort of un, unconfounds the circulation pattern in the American Bank Center and makes it a little bit more intelligible for users, I think. Um, and then speaking a little bit more broadly, Rob mentioned the importance of a walkable district, uh, and we, we totally agree with that and have illustrated conceptually how that walkable district might begin to extend downtown Corpus Christi to the north, uh, to the, the cultural, uh, district that you already have, which is those purple buildings near the water, um, by creating a little bit more of a public-private, uh, destination just immediately southwest of the ABC. So this would be comprised of hotels, which you see in orange here in this diagram, a, a lot of small-scale, um, retail development, which retail in this case doesn't mean shops, it probably means bars and restaurants, uh, perhaps with, with housing on top, but most importantly, things that would be of interest to convention-goers, which would be bars and restaurants. Uh, and then that, uh, development is, is wrapped around Heritage Park, which would be reconfigured as a destination in itself, um, with, and entertainment, and you see that little plaza at the north end of Heritage Park that would have a small stage and, and the ability to host outdoor events. And then we're proposing actually relocating some of the historic buildings in, in Heritage Park to make a little bit, uh, denser and more clustered collection of small buildings that could actually be used as, uh, again, uh, sort of boutiquey bars and restaurants as part of this destination district. So some of those historic buildings could be repurposed in that way and actually contribute to the overall success and, and vitality of that district, which we think would be a fun thing to do. Uh, this conceptual plan, uh, shows, uh, stuff happening both on, on city land and on land that's not owned by the city, but even if you just looked at land that is strictly owned by the city, like in this diagram, you can see that we are still able to accomplish all the goals of phase one of the recommendations, uh, without buying anybody else's land or, or having to acquire anybody else's land. So it's, it really is an extraordinary opportunity that you have to be able to do all this stuff on land that's already city-owned. Uh, so just again, to, to, to finish out the discussion of this diagram, the new headquarters hotel is kind of tucked into the southwest corner of the, uh, ABC property on what is now a surface parking lot, connected by a bridge into the convention part of the center so that people can, can have an indoor experience from the hotel into the ABC, which, as Rob mentioned, is very important for being competitive in the convention business, having an attached convention headquarters hotel. And then a, a second, slightly smaller hotel could be just across, uh, Chaparral Street, uh, and the, the, uh, reconfigured, uh, convention center would have a new entrance kind of facing to the west, uh, that would address, uh, that new hotel as well as the destination district around Heritage Park. So it would, it kind of involve flipping the front door of the, uh, convention center to the west side of the building, uh, but you would still have that, that very spectacular grand ballroom on the second level facing east. And so that's a, a quick overview of, uh, the site plan, and Rob, I'll let, turn it back to you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Oh, and don't forget the three D.
Yeah, so that's, sorry, this is just a, a three D diagram of what we were just talking about, and you can see, this is kind of looking out toward the waters. You can see the big hotel, uh, right in the center of that image, uh, the slightly smaller hotel on the left, and then there's another site, which is not city-owned, which would be a great hotel site immediately south of the arena, um, but that, you know, that site is controlled by private owners, so we can't really dictate what happens on that.
I'm sorry.
There's also a fourth hotel site on, uh, on land, uh, that is, uh, currently occupied by a Corps of Engineer building on the harbor that would be a great site for a small boutique hotel.
Can you go back, excuse me, to the
Sure.
screen before, I think we can more easily see. Can you circle the hotels here? You, you had the two, well, no, there's three here. Okay, one.
Yeah, so the, the fourth hotel is, is on that Corps of Engineer building site that is, uh, again, it's not city-owned, so strictly peaking, you, you couldn't, uh, do that without acquiring that, that parcel from the Corps.
Right, this would be the Corps of Engineer site right here with the arrow on the upper North Peninsula. This one here, right, Councilman, we don't own that piece. We do own two of them. We own this piece and we own this piece. So where the headquarters hotel would be, we own that. Where this other one on Chaparral, we own that property, we'd be in the city.
Okay.
Right, and the Corps of Engineers, we know this, that's why this is attractive to the city, and we've been working with the Corps, uh, for my four years here, at least having dialogue that there would be interest in the city acquiring that site if they ever sell it.
Well, that is going to be something we're going to all take up here because, um, that, that building is in a, in a, or there's verbiage in a bill that's going to move forward that we're going to have to address legislatively between the port, excuse me, the port and, um, the Corps. And so it's, it's something, and this is kind of off, but I do want to let the council know that it, that it, this is something that, um, there was dialogue being had between the port and the Corps that did not involve us, another reason, uh, why our appointments are so important. Um, and so those, that, that dialogue had been happening, knowing all of that land around there is the city's, um, and so now we have this wonderful plan, and we have legislation that we found out about that is, um, dealing with that piece of property that we had no idea about. So that would be unfortunate, nothing's done, but, um, to your point, we're going to have to address that, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so yes, in terms of the impacts, so, uh, a couple things to address here. So first off, um, assuming that this all gets built, right, and this is just the phase one elements, we're not including the phase two or phase three elements, but the two hotels, the convention center, there's a parking structure that would have to be built, um, and the new headquarters hotel. Um, the, the impact over thirty years is almost fourteen billion, uh, in net new spending, uh, from outside. new spending from outside the community into the community. And about half of that would be net new earnings to local people in their pocket, supporting over 3,200 full-time equivalent positions in the economy from all that spending. And then we have over 5,000 new one-time construction jobs. Obviously, it's a significant investment. You can see what the investment would be on the construction packs on the right side, 639 million in today's dollars. And so 5,100 construction jobs. And then in terms of new state taxes, you may not care about that as much, but it's relevant because there's some state tools that allow you to recapture some of those taxes to help with funding and incentivizing these projects. And so that's an important number. And then over 560 million in local taxes over 30 years from the hotel tax and the sales tax and the real estate tax. So the significant amount of impact generated by this. I do want to note something. There was an article in the paper or the news, the news in general, in the last 24 hours that said that this would be a $500 million convention center expansion and that is an inaccurate figure. So in your report, it has all the numbers broken down for what the cost would be and the public sector and the private sector costs. We're looking at an estimate for the convention center of 190 million, which I think when you compare that to the deferred maintenance cost of 60 million that's already hanging out there, it sort of presents you with a choice, right? Do you want to just Band-Aid and spend $60 million on keeping the thing kind of going the way it is? Or do we invest the 190 to make it actually really competitive and expanded and compelling? The parking garage is about $30 million and, excuse me, 25 to 30 million. And then the rest of the projects are to be privately invested and developed, although the Headquarters Hotel, as I mentioned, would require some public participation as they all do because they are very expensive. But again, there are tools in the toolbox that you are allowed to use from the state that would allow you to go ahead and move forward on that. So we're at the point now where we're done with the study, we're interested in your feedback, and we've started to just look at additional drawings to bring it to life, but as well as, you know, if you all were interested in moving the project forward, how might this, the funding occur? Because it's very complicated. There's a lot of different tools in the toolbox out there. And so that's kind of where we are. We're just hanging out there right now, ready to present to you and get your feedback.
Okay, Councilman Hatcher. Excuse me.
What is the total estimated cost?
Total estimated cost?
Well, the total investment by all public and private sources would be 639 million. The public sector elements, the convention center and the garage, would total about 225 million. And then any subsidy needed to induce the private sector developments, which we've made some estimates on. But again, those, there are tools to recapture those costs.
Sure. Great presentation, other than the price range. I guess, really, the only thing I wanted to say is directed to our staff is, I've been here for a long time, believe it or not. That is why I am a 35-year-old with an almost completely blinding forehead. But this is probably the sixth study I've seen on the American Bank Center. And I know we've been doing this for a while and this is kind of our most in-depth one and you can tell. But we spoke earlier about $14 million missing. Every time we invest in a new study, nope, y'all do a great job. It has nothing to do with y'all. Every time we invest in a new study, that is definitely money that we are missing, especially if we don't act on it. So all I'm saying is, is for the new council members, this is nothing new. This is the 10th to 20th time we've seen something like this, just not as great and not as in-depth. All I'm saying is, is I agree with them and we need to hurry up and act on it. Not for $600 million, but I mean, there's some things that we can do. So I'm just tired of seeing studies. We all know what we need to do. Y'all are exactly right. Sometimes we do need to go hire a paid professional to tell us these things so that we get moving. At the same time, sometimes city council members like myself might have to vote on a tax increase so we get the money to pay for these things. But we all know what we need to do. We need a convention center. Corpus Christi is growing too quick. We need an airport that works. This session, we have gaming coming up. Gaming's been looked at down here in Corpus Christi for the last 20 years. In fact, we're the only city that has been looked at for 20 years with a kind of serious hint on it. Can you imagine if you had a $2 billion casino right next to your deal? We were one of four locations in the state of Texas to get that? Man, that would sure make that look good. We know what we need to do. None of this is new. Let's just start making some moves, figuring it out.
And if I may add, you know, we're working on the Dallas center expansion, which is about $3 billion, and the Fort Worth project, which we've been working on for 10 years to expand their center. And both of those, and really all convention-style projects and hotels in Texas and in most places do not require local taxes to be raised and that's never been the idea. And so, well, I know, but when you say it, even the newspaper doesn't know that you have a smile on your face when you say it.
That is true. Good point.
So, yeah, the whole notion is that the project pays for itself by the taxes it generates and those are state and local hotel taxes, visitor taxes and things that are already in place.
Just so that you know, it was part of our bond proposal project for our budget, not bond proposal, but for our budget, we were looking at it. Because we didn't raise our rates high enough, we couldn't reach some of the numbers.
Got it.
Joe, I apologize to the news.
And Councilman, can I add to that? And Mayor, if you don't mind, this may be the sixth study, but some differences in this one is that we're losing ground. The city of Corpus Christi is losing ground because our competitor cities in Texas are investing.
And the longer we wait, worse.
Right. So we have a facility that's aging. The investment that this community put into it is waning, if you will, and competition is increasing. So Rob, he's, I don't know if he said it here, but he, in a recent meeting, he really boiled it down to three things for us. We can continue to lose, lose here in terms of the convention business and lose the investment that the community has placed into the center. Or we can, we can, we can not get it at all. We can get out of the convention business. And then a third choice is we can invest and be competitive and protect taxpayer investment in what we have already.
And I agree.
We're at a point where we have to make some decision because the losing one is one we're in and we continue to lose more and more.
And for the record, Peter was not here when we had eight of these presentations. Okay. In fact, I think our CBB had helped us get started back up on this again.
Sure.
But we have been looking at this for a long time and we have never acted on it. Hopefully now with, you know, the mayor says it's a new day. I tell you what, if we fix out American Bank Center, it'll be the newest day of days we've ever had.
It's a new day. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Pusley. Yes, sir.
Okay, guys. Good stuff. I just, a few questions. And Rob, I think I talked to you about this when we did our one-on-one deal. Can you give us, and you don't have to do it this minute or today, but at some point, some examples of cities who went through this sort of transformation on this kind of scale or close to it and what their success rate was after that expenditure and/or if they didn't, if they weren't successful? Because I've received some calls today that said there's some examples of cities in Texas who did this and afterwards they didn't have the success that they thought they were going to have.
Well, there certainly always going to be.
And that may not be true. I'm just trying to gather information.
Well, and, you know, there are always naysayers out there and honestly, if you don't hit it on all cylinders, you won't have the success that you want. You can't hodgepodge it, right?
Yeah.
And there's a professor at University of San Antonio, Texas, that, you know, makes a living sort of as an anti-convention center guy, so you'll probably hear from him. But his name is Haywood Sanders. So if that comes up, you'll hear from him.
There's always somebody against everything.
But, no, certainly. So during our analysis of you all, as well as larger cities in Texas, because we recently did this for Dallas and others, and, you know, so we sort of get into the alchemy of placemaking, like what makes a place, a place that people actually want to go to and also live and work and just hang out. And so through that process, you discover the places, and we've worked in many of them, that have actually had like what you have, a bunch of parking lots and not much else going on, yet surrounded by some really cool stuff, right? The water, you've got Whataburger Field, you've got some nice cultural assets there, but there's just nothing bringing it together. So while it's a much larger city, Kansas City was in the same boat about 15 years ago. Their downtown was completely desolate. It was government buildings and it was surface parking lots. There was nothing going on. They lost, they lost the Big 12 championship because they had an outmoded arena. And so they had a visionary mayor named Kay Barnes and David's from Kansas City, so he knows. And she said, I want to accomplish three things as mayor. I want to get the Big 12 tournament back, so we need a good arena. I want to fix up our convention center because we're losing conventions every which way but Sunday. And I want to recreate our downtown and glue it all together with a place that's activated. And so she did that, went to the state legislature, got some new tools in place to create a super TIF district. They called it the MoDessa Missouri Downtown Economic Stimulus Act. And so it was a sort of a city-state combination of, sort of a TIF district of nine different taxes. And they worked with the Cordish Companies who developed this district called the Power and Light District. It's about eight blocks. They got funding on a statewide auto rental tax to build the Sprint Center, which is now the T-Mobile Center Arena, which is one of the most successful arenas in the country. And they got money to put a nice big ballroom on their convention center and then eventually they also built a legit convention headquarters hotel. She got all those things done and it recreated downtown. In the meantime, they actually got H&R Block to move their headquarters there and build a tower right in the middle of the whole thing. We always wondered if it would succeed. We, you know, you hope it does. We did all those studies and they opened into the Great Recession, so it was a little slow on the uptake, but it has transformed. If you look at the pictures of the surface parking lots from before and now all the stuff that's there, and they can't build apartments fast enough now because people want to live down there. We always thought, oh, people will never live there. It'll just be for tourists. No. Now that's what's actually carrying this place is it's a place that people really want to live. All the Gen Z'ers out there and the millennials, they're living down there and there's entertainment, there's all kinds of stuff going on. So, you know, I recommend a visit there. I recommend going to Oklahoma City with their Bricktown District and their new Omni Hotel attached to their new convention center.
I've been there.
So there are some, there are some trips you could take to just see some of these examples. And I think there's a few we could recommend.
Okay. Real quickly, let me go through some of those because I know we've got other people that want to ask questions. I think, Peter, what we also need to take a look at is we want more entertainment venues around this area and the cost of property down in that area now has become a big issue. The cost of property in that whole area is sky high at this point and when they hear us talking about this, it's probably going to go higher. Where is the parking garage going to be located? Is it located under the Destination Hotel or?
So David, you want to point that out? I mean, obviously, this is all conceptual, but.
I understand.
Yes. There would be parking under the Destination Hotel, although that, the convention hotel, that would most likely be for the hotel itself.
Okay.
In the left center of this image, you can see some red buildings wrapped around a gray square. That would, that would be one of the primary parking garages that would replace the surface parking behind ABC that would be displaced by this development.
Okay, that's fine. And I just want to mention, and I know this is all, you know, broad-brush stuff right now, but I expressed to Rob and I want to express again, that's fine where we locate the parking garage is fine, but I just want to make sure we have plenty of handicap accessibility from that parking garage or where we're going to have parking lots to this facility so that people who are, have disabilities don't have to struggle with trying to get into these buildings.
100%.
And I think one of the things we also have to be considerate of is we've been spending a lot of time and effort in getting our downtown revitalized. We need to think about what impact this might have on downtown. And then finally, is there, has there been any, did you put together numbers for Peter and the staff on what it would cost just to fix what we have if we get to the point where we decide, you know, we're not going to do this grandiose remodel or whatnot? What's it going to take to fix what we have?
Yeah, I do know that those numbers have been put together and the general manager of the facility is here today and he can report on those if you'd like. I mean, I believe it's about $60 million in deferred maintenance. It's a big number. So, and the longer you wait, all of a sudden, it's like, now, I could be wrong.
That's true. Right. Rob, let me answer that. So we have a separate consultant working for the city's engineering department.
Okay.
That has completed the assessment of the entire building, the roof, the chillers, you know, the MVPs. But that price tag's coming in at between 40 to 50 million.
Okay.
Apologies.
So that's the deferred maintenance cost, upwards of 50 million. That probably doesn't include inflation, so as you schedule.
If we only just fix what we have, we're still going to spend 50 million plus.
Right. Yes, sir.
So that.
Yeah.
In today's dollars. So if we do it five years from now, you know, that's inflation.
And lose economic impact.
And I think there's another wonderful example. Destin, Florida has a Heritage Center Park where they went in and allowed people to come in and put different kinds of businesses in the buildings in their Heritage Park. And it's a wonderful experience. We really enjoyed it there. So I think that's a, that's a good point. So thank you, guys. I appreciate the information.
Thank you.
Councilman Klein?
Yeah, thanks. Very interesting presentation. I have some concerns, I guess, when you knew what we were talking about relocating some of the buildings at Heritage Park. I am a historian and I understand as well that historically, the buildings at Heritage Park actually were not located there. They were relocated to there at some point, a few decades here in the past. But I had some concerns or wondered about this as well. You know, there's a great deal of talk about, you know, comparing us to Dallas or San Antonio or Houston. You know, those are much larger metroplexes than we are. I think I might be more accurate. I know that they may be perhaps our competition, I guess, but more instructive to look at, I think Councilman Pusley mentioned Oklahoma City, or maybe you guys mentioned Oklahoma City, Wichita, Des Moines, Cincinnati. Those are kind of standalone communities that are, I guess Cincinnati is about the same size, I'm not sure about that now, that stand alone by themselves. And so what we're looking at here is if we're going to do all this, is it to service the people who live in the immediate area here, in the Corpus Christi area, to get them to come into the American, to the ABC? Or are we trying to draw people in from outside of that, from South Texas, right? So people from Alice, from Hebronville, from San Patricio County, down into Corpus Christi. And so it's a different sort of animal, I think, than, as I said, maybe Dallas or Houston, which have much larger populations to begin with to draw on.
Certainly, your market is a smaller market. So, and, yeah, with all the things that come along with that, like lack, lesser accessibility and that type of thing. However, there are many examples of small to mid-sized cities who have reinvented themselves all over the country. And so we're happy to share some of those examples. We were talking about some of them at dinner last night. You mentioned some, Evansville, Indiana, we worked with them. They had a longtime center like you did, but they didn't have the hotel package. They didn't have anything walkable. They built the arena, attached it. They built the Headquarters Hotel and attached it and revitalized downtown. And so that's been a real boon for them. I think you can look at Grand Rapids, which is a little bigger than you still, but they've really come into their own and a lot of it's been through investment in these event and entertainment. I would call it the event and entertainment infrastructure that then is glued together with lots of bars and restaurants throughout their downtown. That's been a public and a private effort. So there are many examples that we could certainly provide for you. One, one thing I wanted to mention... provide for you. Um, one one thing I wanted to mention also was, um, we didn't talk about what I would call the Cultural Trail. We call it that in Indianapolis, which is the ex- uh, which is the connector of, um, sort of a wide sidewalk. In fact, one of your presentations from, uh, Public Comment, I think earlier, was talking about dangerous streets and riding bikes and whatnot. Um, one of the great things that cities have been doing across the country, including my hometown, is develop these these urban trails, right? So they're they're wider, they're, you know, maybe twelve feet wide, um, well-lighted, well-landscaped, all of those kinds of things, and safe, and maybe, um, uh, and and so they connect all of these places that are currently not connected. And so we have one drawn in here from Whataburger Field all the way down Chaparral, and that would connect you to your existing downtown, because there's a lot to love about your existing downtown. So connectivity and creating another critical mass up here, and then hopefully, then that will encourage the the private landowners to finally develop the land that's currently underutilized, uh, between where the Omni sits and where the ABC is. So that was just something I wanted to throw in. Sorry.
Thank you.
Yeah. You're you're done. And I'd just like to let the council know that we have, um, Scott Joslev with Texas Hotel and Lodging Association available on, uh, the web. Right, Rebecca, you've got him? Or who's got him on?
I can check. Uh, Mr. Joslin, are you online?
Yes, I am. I'm here as a resource.
Perfect. Thank you. I just want to make sure the council, the council knows that. Councilwoman Campus?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, what struck out for me, uh, for the presentation was page eleven, the major competitors, district elements. Um, and it, to me, what I what I saw contributed to the, um, I guess, what made these, uh, convention centers ranked high for me were the amounts of restaurants, the bars, that, uh, to me, that was more important than the actual convention center. So what, I mean, I know that's not where you're coming from, because you're coming from, you're wanting to build the convention center first and then have the the opposite, you know, have the restaurants come later. But, I mean, wouldn't it be visibly cheaper or better if we could encourage it the other way? We wouldn't have the the expense?
We we see simultaneous as best, or or even, yeah, if if you have the visitor district or the mixed-use district, right? Because we want it to be for locals and visitors, not just one or the other.
Mm-huh.
I a hundred percent agree with you, and I will tell you that when we did this in Dallas, and and is Dallas on here? Yeah, Kay Bailey is at the bottom there with you. Um, because i- if you've been to the convention center there, there's a lot of stuff in the way, including a cemetery and some other things, and so you can't easily walk to anything to eat or drink around the Dallas Convention Center. So it was the reason that we're essentially moving the Dallas Convention Center out of the way is so that we can create a district. So they're just doing the same thing that we're recommending to you, but on a larger scale, uh, but it's for the exact same reason. Their meeting planners and visitors are frustrated that they they get there, just like they get here, and they feel stuck.
Yeah.
In no man's land.
Right. There's nothing to do. I mean, that's what, I mean, I've lived here all my life, and that's, uh, what we continue to to say. Especially, I mean, right there, that is our jewel, right? So you, I mean, I love that now it's getting so popular, the walking, I mean, more so, and of course, the bike trail. I wish we could encourage that instead and, um, really develop that, you know, where we have more nature, you know, we have, I mean, we've got some 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 nice pockets, you know, in downtown, the downtown area, but again, there's that break, like there's nothing in between. And I'm just saying, I wish we could incentivize them. I mean, I wish if we could give a tax incentive to the restaurants and bars, I'd be willing to do that, because that, to me, would bring in more, uh, money and more people to our area, because we already have what people want. You can't buy the bay. You've got to, like, make a reason. I mean, you, this is, uh, to me, the most beautiful city in in the world for me. I mean, I haven't traveled as much as some others, but because I know how priceless this is, I protect it fiercely. And so I'm just saying, I don't know if we actually need a huge convention center, but I do feel that if we could incentivize anything, it would be to incentivize, you know, our bars and our restaurants or and and encourage more bike trails and walk trails. So, anyway, but thank you. You've done a fabulous job, and and I appreciate just looking at this. It just confirmed what I thought, too, which is, it's really about the the bars and the restaurants. I'm sorry, but people like that.
I hear you. Yeah.
And the hotel.
And the hotel.
The Lynchpin. Uh, Councilman Hernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a few questions here, because in looking at the amounts for the work for the hotel, I mean, uh, for the convention center and parking garage, about two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars, right?
Yeah.
Um, so we have to kind of do a kind of a nexus as to what can get repaired and what can be part of a, I guess, expansion to where, you know, I, it's hard to see doing two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars off the top head, because you got to understand what we're kind of a historical aspect. We had had a situation where the, in the past, we focused on stuff like this, like the American Bank Center, Whataburger Field, and we neglected a lot of the stuff that cities should do, right? You know, infrastructure, uh, streets, stuff like that. So we got to be careful that we're not, you don't go back to that that model and neglect some of the other stuff. Or because we have all, because we had that neglect, funding should be spent there versus over here. So it has to be funded within its own aspect, with whether it's a municipal management district or expansion of the DMD, uh, a TERs, or type A, type B, whatever it has to be, it has to be or sale hu- hot taxes, has to be within that bubble, right? I can't see it going further, because it that means our bonding capacity won't be there for the stuff what we actually need, right? So, but I also need a prioritization of what actually needs to be done, right? Obviously, we have an HVAC issue. One of the two HVACs don't work. I I think we've talked about that over there, uh, with the, oh, the, oh, OBG, sorry.
OBG three.
OBG, right?
Yep. So we talked about that, and one of the things that actually, we also found out that part of that HVAC also supplies the, uh, art museum.
Right.
Which we have nothing planned for capital improvements over there. So there's there's more than to this than just the isolation of the convention center. Um, so what what I would like to see is kind of a prioritization of what can be done within the realm of how much money we have available for it, within that bubble that I described of of funding within it. I would not would not recommend doing general obligation bonds for eh, for any kind of funding for this.
Yeah, we're not either, just to put it on the record.
Okay.
We have too many other needs.
I would never, I would never vote for that.
Right.
And I'd I'd advocate against it.
Right.
So just within what you've got in terms of funding, and then prioritize what we can do.
Right.
To improve the ci- the the facilities, to make it more viable, but, you know, have a plan a long-term, you know, let's say, ten-year plan, whatever that may be. Um, because it's very difficult to get to where we want to go, considering all the other challenges that we have. I appreciate the kind of the the thought process here, but also kind of reminded me sometimes when staff gives us information. Uh, but for example, and Councilman Klein had it kind of uh, hit the nail on the head when I was, what I was thinking about in terms of what other kind of destinations are similar to us as, you know, we're kind of isolated from other metroplexes, like, for example, Fort Worth, San Antonio, um, Houston, they have a lot more population, a lot more cities, a lot more things that are happening around them that we don't necessarily have. We'd be more of something like Lubbock, El Paso. You know, I think Waco is the only one here that I kind of thought was kind of similar in terms of being out on its own. So I'm curious as to how you chose these particular locations.
Well, so there's there's sort of who's like you and then who you compete with. And and for better or for worse, you're competing with the folks you compete with, right? That that's the competitive set. But the question's a valid one, and actually, Waco is a great example of a community that's really, like, pulled itself up by its bootstraps and and cr- you know, created a better sense of place for itself, um, and done a lot of great things. And also, Lubbock actually has an RFP on the street, uh, that we're responding to this week for a convention headquarters hotel study. Um, so I think even these smaller communities, uh, that might have some relevance to you, um, are trying to do the same types of things.
Well, and then we're kind of away from our downtown area. A lot of these convention areas are kind of centered in their downtown area. Kay Bailey Hutchison, yeah, Fort Worth, even Lubbock to an extent. Um, El Paso's, theirs is downtown. Uh, heck, San Antonio's downtown. We're kind of away from that. Are there any that are similar in that sense to where their convention center is away from their main, uh, downtown area?
Yeah, there are plenty. Savannah, Georgia is a a great example. Um, even Chicago is a huge example, where it's like, you know, a mile away from from where most people go to downtown. So there are plenty of places where the convention center is not ideally located, and so you either move the center or you create a place around the center.
Okay, and so I guess our our, I guess this is more for staff, right? How do we prioritize this? You know, what do we have to fix? What can we expand? What can we do as a as a combination? How do we fund it? Like I said, I got we got Alyssa here, so she's with the DMD, so it might be something along those lines.
Yeah, and and Councilman, I'm going to interrupt you really quickly, because I don't want to get ahead of where we are today. So today's a presentation on, you know, what what can be done in this area, which is what we asked you to do. Um, the funding sources, and there will be a menu of options for us to consider and to then have that discussion as to what gets prioritized, what, how do we, you know, differentiate between the convention center versus the Lynchpin Hotel versus the Hotel Number Three versus the, you know, and the list goes on.
Well, I bring up.
So I just want to keep.
I bring up the funding because it's in the presentation.
I understand, but the details of funding will come at a different date, so that we can all, um, discuss them and look at them.
That's why I asked, that's why I asked for a prioritization of it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the, and lastly.
Okay, if I can just tag on what the mayor said. So we, that is the next step.
Yeah.
Uh, we we, all the discussion points were, have been discussed here already. So it includes, uh, what is the expansion elements? What about the, just the renovations for the deferred maintenance? What funding sources do we have? And and that prioritization and that menuing, that's next step over the next three months or so.
Okay, so there there are things I did not like about this, right? I did not like, well, obviously, you knew where I stood on the Water Gardens and where I thought that hotel should be. I'm not a fan of spending money on, uh, on something that pushes up water in the air during a drought. The, uh, also, there's no return on investment on it. So that, and then I'm not a fan of the fact that you have a hotel put where the Asian Museum is currently located at. Uh, that, I mean, I, it's a, it's a bu- uh, uh, it's a historical, you know, it's a history bu- I mean, it's a museum that's currently being used, and I don't think we should discriminate against our Asian folks to, and tell them that they got to get out.
Who said that?
We're not.
I did.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, let's go, uh, one step, let's clarify. This is before us for consideration. No one is saying we're kicking anyone out. There is a little word that says hotel over there. That's not our land. It's a proposition. Maybe we can work that out, maybe we can't. So so let's not, let's not speak in terms of discrimination against anyone, because that's not what we're doing. And the return on investment on the Water Gardens, I understand, and I respect your position, but let's let's not, let's not, let's keep this very real. The Water Gardens are something that, the return on investment is not in dollars. It is in the public being able to enjoy something that affects their quality of life. So my concern is, you've said that multiple times, and I just don't, I want to make sure that is your opinion and not that of the council's or of Hunden's.
Yeah, and again, our our, this is, this is one version of a master plan that will evolve over time. And again, if if, um, you know, there are existing, um, cultural assets, um, in our mind, some of those, uh, may want to be actually incorporated into the district in a different way. And so, again, the, right now, it's sort of puzzle pieces, and th- this is just, uh, the first broad brush.
Sure.
Well, I I mean, to that, to that point, right, the Asian Museum has been there for a while. It's been there ever since I can remember. Uh, it's, they're active in the community. I don't think it's something we should consider, uh, not, you know, just as an afterthought. Um.
If we, yeah.
Disrespect intended.
Yeah, there's no, right, uh, just to repeat that, there was no disrespect intended.
Well, I just want to make sure I I point that out.
Right, it's a city building, so it is aged, just like the convention center. So if if it was relocated, the city would facilitate a relocation plan, a new building. And we wouldn't just say, okay, we're done with the Asian Center, no more. We would relocate, develop a new building. You know, all that has to be discussed. These are conceptual ideas, and as the mayor said, nobody's being displaced with the presentation, right?
Okay, well, I di- I didn't want to have a tacit or, you know, assumed, uh, thing that was happening just because it's in the plan or kind of in the presentation.
It's worth the conversation. We appreciate it.
Right, part of the conversation. So, um, you know, everything's got to be reasonable in terms of how we approach this, right? And so I I advise, you know, you know, let's not look at the pie in the sky. Let's do what's reasonable and what we can achieve with the funding that we have. Thank you.
And and that will be up to these nine people up here, so, good point. Councilman Roy?
Uh, so, thank you for your presentation. I know we're not talking funding right now, but I do want to talk a little bit about why I think it's important that part of this, our consideration in that, that we, um, have a sense of urgency, because I do believe that there are state and federal funds that could possibly be available. And as you know, um, in Texas, we meet every other year. So if we meet, if we miss this cycle, just to inquire and see what monies are available, then we're going to put ourselves about two to three years behind. So I I want to press upon that, that it's important, even though we may not agree, that there's some fundamental things that we need to do that are smart in terms of investigating this, so that we can answer the question, how much money is available. And I believe, based on the average, um, convention center or somebody that's looking at this project in Texas, on average, I think that the state and federal funds have been up to about two-hundred-and-twenty million dollars that have helped facilitate that. I could be wrong, but I do know that there's a pretty large dollar amount that some cities have been able to get some help with. So I wanted to just put that out there and and just kind of talk about that, because sometimes we have a tendency to not do anything, because we want to get every fact and every stone unturned, and then we miss opportunities. Um, the other thing is, is that, um, early on, I mean, very early on, nineteen eighty-six, I had the opportunity to actually be a part of a hotel, a a city, the City of Industry, California, that was a very, that's not anywhere near downtown, but they had a vision to be able to to do a convention center and, um, hotel. They 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 did a golf course, equestrian center, uh, Olympic swimming pool, to, uh, actually go after the nineteen eighty-six Olympics, so I'm dating myself there. And it was extremely successful, and I can remember a lot of the meetings in which people thought, we'll never, the City of Industry, you know, the only thing that they ever had there that was great was that Mattel was the home of the City of Industry, and they made Barbie dolls there. But they went after this and and they achieved it. And it was a very exciting timeframe to be able to do that. Uh, I think there are a lot of the pieces that we, you know, sixty million dollars or fifty million dollars to put into a building. I I would hate to see us go ahead and make that decision, and then all of a sudden, a council later say, oh, well, we really need to go back to the convention center idea, and then we're going to pay more money on tearing up something that we just renovated. I think there's a lot of consideration here. I'm excited, though. I'm excited that we're having this dialogue, even though it may be for the sixth, seventh, or eighth time. So, thank you.
Appreciate that, the the timing of some of those tools that you may have at your disposal. Um, you're written in for some of those tools right now, but some you're not. And this legislative session is the time, unless you want to wait two more years, to go and look at those things. So I would encourage, uh, you know, there are others out there around the state making moves right now to tweak legislation. So to the extent that you could get yourself included in some of these tools that exist for other cities, this would be the time to do it. And and we're not here to talk about that today specifically, but if you want to invite us back soon to do that, it's the time.
Mm-huh. Perfect. And we will. Wendy, you get that? Wendy, you get that? Very good, okay.
So, so does that mean we need to push up our, our timetable here, because the opportunity to introduce legislation has a deadline that comes up here pretty quickly.
Well, that's why she's going to, she'll handle that, Wendy will.
Yeah, that's why Wendy's here, but we, we don't have to decide on a financial final plan, we can introduce the legislation with the anticipation that the council may approve a policy to move forward.
And that was my, that was my point.
Yes, exactly.
We've been talking with the prior council, as the council approved the legislative program, knowing that this could be an item, we didn't, the council ultimately didn't put it in because we hadn't had this presentation, there wasn't enough context, but Wendy, who's helping us in our legislative matters in Austin, and the team at the city knows that this may be something we introduce sooner than later, even before we come back to council with the finance plan. Because as Councilman Roy said, once we miss that window, then it's another two years.
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Councilman Suckley.
Well, I've got to get accustomed to pushing my button quicker, I guess, because...
You do.
End of the line, end of the line here, but I agree with many of the things that were said, Councilman Roy's comments about the financing piece of it, that was the majority of my discussion points with, with Rob when I had my briefing. All the people that I've talked to, you know, feel pretty strongly that they don't want any new taxes. So my comment to Rob was, you know, help us identify what all those potential income streams could be, that could help us offset any need to raise taxes at all, and that's what Councilman Roy just touched on again, too, was some of the legislative things that we can do to, to help cover the costs of this, so we can, we can tell our taxpayers that we're utilizing existing sources and existing income streams, or unique ones that we've found through new legislation. So, I would like to say, thank you to everybody that's been involved in this, Brett Otting's involvement in kind of getting this elevated again, you know, for the, whatever it's been, sixth time or whatever, we're doing a study.
I think he was exaggerating.
But, and thank you for all the stakeholders led by Johnny Filippell, thanks for all your efforts to get to this point, and thank you, Rob, for the presentation, I appreciate it. I look forward to the, hearing the, the sixth dot on the timeline there as to the, the financing options.
Very good, and I know, I, I think they're prepared to say some things later.
Yeah, okay, Councilman Barera.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for, for all the work, and thank you to everybody at the, Visit Corpus Christi for all you've done, and so, Sylvia, you're going to have to bear with me here because I'm going to go into another deal like I did this morning, so, you know, I, I, I was somewhat skeptical, and, 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 Rob, you may have figured that out in the times of our calls, you know, I, I was the same, I was in the same frame of mind as Councilman Hernandez. I know, right? Yeah, it's been happening way too much.
Yeah.
But then somebody woke me up, the same thing, hey, you know what, air travel is limited, you have to want to try to get, you have to want to come to Corpus Christi, we're a drive market, you know, having that kind of, having that kind of demand, it just, it just, I just didn't see it, and, but, you know, somebody said, actually, some, two people brought it up, one was my son, who used to live in New Orleans. New Orleans is off the beaten path, but people want to go there. That, so that portion of Louisiana is also very industrial, you know? The other thing is, the metropolitan area, correct me if I'm wrong, in, in New Orleans is about 400, 450,000?
Yeah, they've lost a lot of population.
Yeah. Corpus Christi is 500,000, and growing, because of all the economic expansion that we're continuing to have. So, I'm beginning to whittle away at that argument of, you know, that, that, there's a lot of, there's a lot of attractions. Now, you know, they're 150 years older than we are, you know, but I think that we have a lot of greater amenities than, than what they do, and I think we could offer the same. So I, I, I'm optimistic about that, I think that we need to look at this, and you know, I say, my business, at one time, when I, when I went back into private practice in 2013, I was growing at, you know, 50%, 60% on a regular basis. When I got into council, that came to a halt, but one of the comments I would say, because I was asked at, with my trade association, I would say, the challenge is with a lot of you guys is think small, grow small. So if we think small, then we're going to continue to grow small. So I, I've been kind of trying to figure this out, you know, I got interviewed by the news yesterday, but, so I'm going to ask for some historical data, and just for the public, for the public's information, how did we pay for Whataburger Field?
I'm not sure, Councilman, does, Elsie, did you not, did you see that in our research, in your research, how we paid for...
There ought to be somebody here that's listening that can tell me how we pay for Whataburger Field.
I don't have the information for Whataburger.
But I'm sure Constance, if you're listening somewhere up there, get that information to somebody, because I'm going to go, how do...
I thought it was, it is through the sales, it was to get, because we just paid it off.
Okay.
The convention center, we did, or the, we'll get the answer, Councilman, we're going to call Constance down.
Okay, and then I also want to know how much it costs to build.
Excuse me, Constance just told me 1/8 cent sales tax is what we pay for the...
Okay, and then how much, what was the, what was the project cost for Whataburger Field?
Constance? Lifeline?
I'm going to, ABC, I mean, the convention center expansion and the arena, so I want to know, what's the vehicle to finance all, sales tax, I know the answer.
Sales tax has been at, yeah, 1/8 cent in our type A corporation.
For all of them?
For all those three, yes, sir.
So, which is going to be retired somewhat, some of it's going to be retired.
The convention center, arena debt will be retired within two years.
Okay, so, the other item is, but, what was the, the budget for Whataburger Field was in the neighborhood of 30 million, I'm assuming. Somebody can correct me. ABC, I believe, was in the neighborhood of 50, right? And, or, not the American Bank Center, the arena was about 50. The convention center expansion, I can't remember, where's Michael Hunter? You're a historian, do you know, do you remember? Are you paying attention? Wake up, wake up. What was, if we can find out, and let's just say for grins, okay, that it was 40 million. I know, I was a big part of that. So right then and there already, what is it, so, seven and four, that's $120 million that we did within a, probably a, a five-year period. Okay, I, I looked up the factor of, of, 20 years ago, what was 120 million dollars? And it was, it's 1.72, so 120 million dollars times 1.72 is 206 million, in today's money.
That's what, what's that number?
206 million.
For what, though?
Well, the thing I'm saying is that there, the delta that they're saying, for us to do the convention center expansion, is, you said what, 200?
190 plus parking gets you 220.
220.
In today's dollars.
So what I'm saying is that, and, and that's if those numbers are accurate, but my point, my, the point, the reason I bring that all around is, I remember, that's really what got me started in, in, in politics, or got me more aggressive in politics, was I wanted to see the expansion of the American Bank Center, the arena, I was a big boxing fan, we knew that the Memorial Coliseum was not going to be adequate enough, we knew that, we knew that. And then I remember, I talked to you about, and I've talked to you, and I wish your sports commission would be more aggressive with regard to, with our, regard to boxing. We've had Showtime boxing here, we've had HBO boxing here, you see, it used to be, they didn't have drone footage back then, it was helicopters that would go by, and I was, I'd see that on TV, I was like, wow, that's Corpus Christi, look, there's me. Anyway, but, we had that expansion, and I want to say that for the public, that 200 million dollars is not an undoable amount, because of the fact that, 20 years ago, we had some visionaries, and during that time, we had the American Bank Center expansion, we had, we had the arena constructed, we had Whataburger Field constructed, which was done in conjunction with the Port of Corpus Christi. Whataburger Field, the land was given to us by, by the Port of Corpus Christi. So, you had a group of visionary, and then at the same time, they did the seawall, the seawall expansion, they did Wesley Sealed Dam, so what I'm challenging the rest of my, my colleagues here, and, and I've said this, is that the 200 million is not, is not doable, is doable, plus I think there would be the expansion. I, I could tell you that, you know, obviously, we all go to TML, and it's either San Antonio or Houston, and the reason being is because there has to be enough capacity for all those hotels. There used to be a lot of TML, smaller functions that were here, what have you, there used to be a lot of, the Tasbe, Texas Association of School Boards, that was also here. So I, I, I think we just need to be bold, and so, once again, sales tax is not going to affect street repair, you know, say, which is a big priority, okay? What is it, so, I just want to say that for the public, for those that are worried about what the cost is going to be. So I, I, I think, I think it's highly doable, from my perspective, I, I would like to see some type of walkable hotel very soon, so that way, we wouldn't lose that anymore, and, you know, once again, I, I think we need to, and I challenge you, Peter, to open the dialogue again with the port, because a lot of these were done with a cooperation of, of, all this, all this stuff that was done 20 years ago was a cooperation of several agencies.
Right, we, we agree to that, Councilman, they have the money.
Okay.
So, okay, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. So I think that's all the questions. This was very, very informative, and we've waited quite a while for it, so, thank you, and we do understand this is a first run, and, and we're very impressed with it. I think that the study findings really bolster the economic value of investing in our city, that's, that's the bottom line, and this council has that vision. You just handed us the draft of that vision, and that's, that's what we need. I think that once we get a menu of how we go about funding this, we can figure that out, you know, where there's a will, there's a way, and that's why you have nine different people with nine different perspectives that will figure it out with, alongside you, alongside us. So I really want to thank you all, Elsie, thank you, everyone who's in the, in the audience that participated, that helped, this is very, this will not, I will say that, this will not sit on any shelf. We, we, I think, I think everyone up here wants to make something of this and create, just reimagine Corpus Christi, this part of Corpus Christi that is going to tie in to downtown, I'm pointing at Alyssa because she's our downtown management CEO, and, and it's going to tie us all together, so it's necessary, it's needed, and we're very grateful. Thank you for your time and your work.
Giddy up.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you, thank you. Elsie, thank you very much. Yes, okay, Peter.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to reiterate your thank you for Elsie, she's on special assignment, and, Rob, last night in the dinner that we had with him, said without Elsie, they wouldn't have, they wouldn't have been able to do this, so we appreciate it, Elsie, thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Elsie, for your leadership, yes, thank you, thank you. She's like an FBI agent on special assignments, I love it. Okay, Peter, thank you, we're going to go ahead and wrap up the meeting, because there is no further business, so I will adjourn the meeting.